So I'll call to order the Riverside, Village Riverside, Illinois Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. Megga, will you please call the roll?
I am here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Haddigan?
Here.
Commissioner Marhul?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
We have Quorum. Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting and Public Hearing Minutes of July 24th, 2019?
Second?
Second. Any comments or edits? I have one, I think. Okay. Uh, page five. The second full paragraph.
Okay.
Second sentence. Director App stated that the Board had discussed in that level of detail, had not discussed, right? I don't remember them discussing in detail.
No.
Okay. Thank you. I'll approve.
I approve.
All right. Thank you. Any visitors, petitions, citizen requests, or communications?
Uh, yeah, this is actually the start of the speech.
Sure. Please come up to the podium. If it's on something else on the agenda, you can wait until that agenda-
You know what? I think it is actually on the agenda.
So you can talk now, or you can wait until the public hearing where it gets into that testimony.
Oh, I'll wait. I'll wait. Thank you.
Our liaison is not yet here. Do you have anything from the Board to transmit?
Uh, the only thing I have is that the text amendment for the zoning administrator and zoning administration changes was approved at the last Village Board meeting. So that is done. And I think that is all I have at this time.
Great. Thanks. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing, PZ-19-03, concerning 277 Gatesby Road. This is a request for variation from the building separation requirement to build and place a freestanding canopy less than 10 feet from the principal structure in the same location as the previous greenhouse. All in, all in favor? To open the meeting? Okay. Let the record show that everybody is still present. This item will be opened and continued to September 25th, our next PZC meeting, to allow for the mailing notification requirements to be completed.
Yeah, let's get a motion to continue the public hearing to that date.
Let's do it the right way. Do I have a motion to continue?
So.
All in favor?
Um.
Do we need a voice vote for that?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the assist there.
Copy that.
Even have it there. Motion to continue. All right. At this time, we will open the next public hearing, PZ-19-04, the zoning ordinance text amendments for medical use and adult-use cannabis business establishments. This is a public hearing to consider text amendments to various sections of the Riverside zoning ordinance relative to cannabis business establishments, including Section 10, 11, 3, uses defined, to add definitions for various cannabis business establishments, Section 10, 5, 9, Table 4, use and bulk requirement tables for the B-1 and B-2 zoning districts relative to the use designations for cannabis business establishments in the various zoning districts within the village, and Section 10, 6, 2, use standards, to add specific standards relative to cannabis business establishments, and to make such other conforming changes to other sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance as may be necessary. All in favor?
Aye.
And everybody is still present. I'll note that the public notice was published in the landmark on August 7th and will be entered into the record as an exhibit. At this time, everybody present who wishes to give testimony, please stand and raise your right hand, and this includes the Village representatives, please. So if you plan to give testimony during the public hearing, please stand. And raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this includes you too, Attorney Mars, please, um, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? I do.
I do.
Okay. Thank you. So first, we're gonna have a presentation from staff, and then after that, there'll be an opportunity for the public to make a comment. Okay. Director App?
Yes. So, um, the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act was signed into law back in June, and by legalizing the sale of recreational cannabis in Illinois effective January 1, the act will have immediate and significant impacts on local governments. Specifically, unlike the Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act, the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act specifically allows municipalities to prohibit adult-use cannabis businesses within their corporate boundaries. It is advisable that municipalities adopt those ordinances before January 1st. Given the rapid turnaround of this, the Village Board began discussing this topic in July and requested the Planning and Zoning Commission conduct a public hearing on text amendments to regulate cannabis-related businesses and provide their recommendation for them for their September 5 Village Board meeting. This text amendment that you have before you is a framework for the Commission and can be revised as part of the Commission's discussion and recommendation to the Village Board. I'll let Attorney Mars elaborate on that a little bit more.
Sure. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to make clear, so you have an ordinance in your packet, and that really provides the framework for discussion tonight, but I wanted you to understand, it's not something that the Village Board has said, "This is what we think it should be." The charge was really, "Let's put together an ordinance that will help guide the discussion." And, and when I do something like that, we make it as inclusive as possible, so I put a lot in there. You could well say, uh, "Hey, you know, this is proposed as a special use. We think maybe it should be a permitted use instead," that some of these use regulations are more than you may want or think are necessary, and, and we can strip those out, but it's easy to, easier to strip things out than to add things in. So, so that's kind of why it's formulated the way it was, and I just wanted to kind of set that as, as a basis for discussion.
So, um, building on that, per our current zoning definition, a cannabis dispensary would be considered a retail sales establishment, and might therefore be considered a permitted use in all of our commercial zoning districts in the absence of more specific regulations. Other cannabis businesses, such as craft growers and cultivars, are a higher-intensity use and would be classified as industrial uses or agricultural uses, which are not permitted uses in our business districts. The proposed amendments include changes to the uses-defined section of the zoning ordinance, and they include revising the retail sales establishment definition to specifically exclude medical and adult-use cannabis dispensaries. It adds definitions for adult-use cannabis business establishments, craft growers, cultivation centers, dispensing organizations, infuser organizations, processing organizations, transporting organizations, as well as the Cannabis and Tax Act and the medical cannabis dispensing organizations. And these definitions that are in there are all taken directly from the Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act and the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Amending the definition of retail sales establishments to exclude cannabis dispensaries does two things. It removes them from automatically being considered permitted uses, and it allows the Village to designate dispensaries as separate and distinct uses, which allows the Village to decide which districts then those uses would be permissible in. Adding the definitions of the various cannabis business types also creates and establishes all those businesses-related uses, and by not specifically including them in the use table, it also allows them to be considered as prohibited uses. Some things for consideration as we're looking through that. So if we make those changes to the definitions, then we've kind of established those uses, and now it's, "What do we do next?" So what do we do next is, how are we going to allow or not allow these use types? So if we want to allow dispensaries, or infusers, or say cafes and lounges, obviously cultivators, processors, craft growers, and transporters, as I've said before, all of those are a higher-intensity use, and I don't think meet any of the intents of our business districts. And so those would not, I would not say those would be considered to be either permitted or special, so they would be prohibited uses in our business districts. If we want to allow one or more of these uses, do we want to further restrict those, the location of those uses? So we have two different business districts. So you're looking at the B-1 districts or the B-2 districts. Our B-1 districts are primarily along Ogden, or Harlem Avenue, and then circling down on Ogden, and then the transitional commercial extends a little bit down Burlington Street. And then our B-2 district is obviously primarily located in the downtown, so Forest Avenue, Burlington, Quincy Street, and here right around the Township Hall, and East Avenue. So that's our two different business areas. So deciding whether or not these uses should be allowed, either as a permitted or a special use, in either of those two districts. If we want to allow them as a special use, you can designate it as such in either of those districts. The state does hold the sole authority for regulating cannabis-related businesses, so we cannot regulate them through licensing like we might a bed and breakfast, or a vacation rental, or even like we would a restaurant with a liquor license. So these uses can be classified as special uses, and then specific standards incorporated for these uses as part of that process. Some standards could also be applied if it were classified as a permitted use, similar to like we do for outdoor cafes, so those are designated as permitted uses in our commercial districts, but we do have some specific standards related to that. So there can be some standards incorporated even if it is a permitted use. If the use is classified as a special use, we can set certain standards, and then it also allows us to evaluate each request individually and apply specific conditions to that use at that specific location. And the draft that you have before you sets forth both conditions for the use itself, as well as materials that you should be considering or asking for in considering those special uses. So that included things like an operations plan and a security plan, traffic studies, looking at things like co-tenancy, so if it were to go into strip center, what are the other uses that are on that site as well, requesting what the hours of operation and anticipated employee count, customer count, things like that. So all of those things are built into things that would have to be submitted for you to consider as part of the special use process. Additionally, it has listed in there specific standards for the special use, and in that is including minimum, minimum distance restrictions from schools, public or private, primary or secondary schools. The draft before you has a 1,000-foot buffer area. It also says that parking must be in compliance with our off-street parking regulations. However, the Village Board may require additional parking as part of the special use based on the analysis that it completes. It states that no onsite consumption would be permitted, no food or alcohol sales or consumption on the premises. Alcohol sales and consumption on the premises is not permitted per the state statute, so irregardless, that's, that's a no-go, but for food sales and consumption on the premises, it would also prohibit that. Has restrictions on product displays, so that product would not be visible from the public street or sidewalk. Requests for parking enforcement agreement, so as a condition of approval, the owner could be required to enter into parking enforcement agreement to allow the police department to enforce tracking, or tracking, traffic and parking regulations on the site. Signage must be in conformance with our code, as well as the act. The act does have specific restrictions on signage as it relates to specific graphics and wording that it can use, as well as any kind of advertising that it does within a certain radius, I believe it's 1,500 feet, from any school or playground?
1,000.
1,000? 1,000 feet from schools, playgrounds, libraries, things like that. So additionally, it restates the state requirements, that hours of operation are restricted to 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. However, it says that as part of the special use, the Village may further limit such hours as a condition where deemed appropriate. Village can require cooperation with the Village, that they're going to provide access to police-fire code enforcement personnel during normal hours of operation to verify compliance, and to cooperate with Village officials in the provision of security footage when requested and related to any prosecution. No orders should be detectable from outside the premises, that the Village may require building enhancements, so the use may be required to install building enhancements such as lighting, or security, or other improvements to ensure the safety of employees and customers, as well as the surrounding area. Restriction, restricts floor area requirements to 75% of the floor area to be related directly to the sale of the actual cannabis, compliance with all our codes, of course, an affidavit of compliance, so they would file an affidavit affirming that they are complying with our minimum distance requirements, as well as all the requirements by the state. And it also specifically says in there that the special use would terminate with the sale, with a change of ownership, so will not run with the land, but would terminate with any change in ownership or abandonment of the use. So those are some of the, the use standards that are incorporated in the amendment before The, the proposal you have before you lists the use as a special use in the B-1C only. Again, that is in kind of three areas on Harlem Avenue, so from 26th Street to Long Common, that area is a B-1 zoning, and then from about Addison down to Lawton is another B-1 area, and then you have Black Hawk to Ogden, and then around Ogden, there's the McNeil Building, and then another medical office building that's adjacent to it on Ogden Avenue. So those are the three B-1C zoning district areas. So it would list it, the proposal has it as listed as a special use in that district only. It also lists the uses in the B-2 table, since it is kind of one long table, it lists in there, but it leaves it blank showing that it's a prohibited use then in our B-2 district, so it would not be allowed in the retail core, mixed-use periphery, or obviously the public use zone. So that is the amendment that you have before you. Some things to consider is, again, it's a framework. If we do have the 1,000-foot buffer, that does remove one of the three B-C areas, the northernmost one from 26th Street to Long Common, that basically to Long Common would be within that 1,000-foot buffer from the Morton High School. So that kind of takes that section out, but the other two would still be viable. If the Commission does not believe these uses should be allowed in the Village, the definition section would still need to be amended, just so we keep that in mind. Similarly, if the Commission believes dispensaries should be permitted uses, they would, they should probably still be separated from the retail sales establishment definition and listed separately in the use table. Riverside is a smoke-free community, so smoking is not allowed in public parks or in indoor public spaces. This would include smoking of cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and cannabis. The state statute also does not allow public consumption of cannabis, so you can't just be walking down the street smoking, so that's not, not something that's been allowed by this act. So it still is up to private property owners to decide whether or not they want to allow consumption to happen on there. So like in an apartment building, it would be up to the owner to decide whether or not they would allow the tenants to be able to smoke in their, in their units. Let's see. All licensing authority, again, falls with the state, and I think those are the other things to take into consideration as we work through this. So that is all, that is my background on that.
Did you want to do a statement? Can you just give us your name, please?
Sure. My name is Brittany Miller. I live at 524 Berkeley in Riverside. I came here tonight to get some clarifications, and I actually did get one. So I was a little bit confused, the B-1C district, I'm on Berkeley, so I'm right, my, I look at the vacant, what was the Title Max? So with the 1,000 feet with Morton, and I don't know if the library is included as a restriction with the library, if you've included that?
Not.
Not currently?
Right.
Um, so that would exclude that building. Is there any chance that at any time before this is approved, that the 1,000 feet would ever be reduced to a 500 feet, or, and that it could change?
As part of this discussion, it may change, depending on what the recommendation is and what the Board ultimately votes on. So until it's voted on, that is-
So that's still a possibility?
Possibility, yes.
Okay. And then I would go talk to the, when would be the next opportunity to then, when will the final-
The final decision could be made on September 5th. This recommendation will go to the Village Board for them to discuss at their September 5th meeting.
Okay.
So that'd be next week, Thursday.
Okay. When would the public know if that 500, if it was ever amended, that 1,000 feet?
You would know at that meeting.
Okay. But will they decide and vote that?
This, this Commission will make a recommendation, and that recommendation will include whether or not that, what that number, if that number would be.
Okay.
So when you leave here, you'll know what this recommendation is, and that's the recommendation that will go to the Village Board.
Right.
And then they will decide whether to concur with that or change it.
And then it's up to us to reach out to them-
Yes.
Privately.
At that meeting as well.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you so much.
I didn't swear in. I didn't swear in.
Do you swear in, please? Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just commenting-
Your name, sir?
Daniel Tusk, T-A-U-S-K. And just being pretty knowledgeable of what's happening in Illinois cannabis legislation, et cetera, and where the expansion of the industry's going, I just, just my perspective is that the 1,000-foot rule is very restrictive, and if you looked at an overlay of the Village where 1,000-foot from school, daycare, and even counting Morton, which is on the opposite side of the street in a different town, town, it would be very unlikely you would land a dispensary from a retail perspective, especially excluding the one B-1 little pocket, which would be one of the small pockets you could go, and then to exclude that further would be restrictive. And when you compare what these retail establishments' options would be, just like any other retailer, to go into neighboring towns where they can be in a more attractive location and still pull the customers and the patience that they hope to attract at that location, they're gonna take advantage of that opportunity, so that's just my perspective.
Thank you. Raise your right hand, stand up.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, my name is Erica Harford. I live at 538 Bird Road. These are my kids, Annie and Frankie Harford, and they attend Blithe Elementary School. I understand that there's some consideration about reducing the 1,000-foot proximity limitation, and as a resident of the area around where that could be affected by that, I wanted to come, I also had some questions, and to also share some perspective about that specific area of the community. I do think it is extremely important to balance the interest in raising revenue and economic development with the type of economic development that we're encouraging in Riverside, and safety, and family considerations. And I understand that the Economic Commission has spent a lot of effort over the last five years, in particular branding and developing for Riverside, the message which has been so successful because it's true, that it's a unique, small-town, family-oriented place to live within, you know, proximity to Chicago, and a lot of young families have chosen Riverside because of that. Well, of families that, you know, may look at Oak Park or other neighborhoods have moved from the city, like our family did, to have their family attend elementary school and grow in this community. And I think the Economic Commission and the Board has been extremely successful in that messaging, and we see it in our schools. So I do understand that that's important, and I think also that I understand why the, you know, the Village would look at revenue, but we've made investments in this community too, and we feel that, I think, many families that have come to that area, the northeast corner in particular, that spans that zoning district between 26th and Long Common, that it's important to recognize some of the things that are unique about that, and that, and to maintain a minimum 1,000-foot proximity limitation for cannabis dispensaries because of a number of reasons. And, and in fact, that a restriction, 1,000-foot restriction for libraries should also be added. So I want to talk about specifically that community, that part of the community. There is a very high density of elementary school children in Riverside and that area. When I moved in, I believe it was four years ago, there was one other family with children on the block. Now virtually every home on Bird and Berkeley Roads, which are adjacent to that section, that's, that's gonna be most impacted by the 1,000-foot proximity limitation. There are many, many families. In fact, on those two small roads, 15% of the first-grade class of Blithe Park Elementary lives. It is extremely high-density with young children, and I think that itself raises specific concerns about locating a dispensary in that particular part of Riverside. You know, there are early learners from Blithe Park, there are, you know, first graders, second graders, third graders, all the way up, but particularly elementary school children, and they're all, they're playing outside, they're walking around that part of the community. And in fact, what's amazing about what's been going on over the last couple of years is that there's been these really, I think, great improvements to the entranceway there near Long Common with the painting and modernization of the building that's on the plaza at Long Common, and bringing in family-oriented businesses that support the tax structure for Riverside, Shining Smiles Dent, Family Dentistry Practice, the nail salon, which, you know, families use, which encourage families to be walking in that particular location as well, and walking across the street to the Berwyn Library. We all use the Riverside Library, and we love it, but there is programming at the Berwyn Library that is different from what we have at Riverside. And we, you know, walk with our kids to Meet a Princess Day, and, you know, go play with Lulu the hamster over there. And it's important to have, you know, that while we're walking, I think, you know, having businesses that are consistent with presenting that welcoming image of Riverside to people coming into Riverside from the east part is really important, and the Economic Commission and the Board have done, I think, a remarkable job of transforming that corner already. The dispensary located within 1,000 feet of a school, within 1,000 feet of a library is absolutely inconsistent with the work that's been done so far. And, you know, Riverside has made sort of really messaged that, and it's, you know, we come here because it's unique, and this is a place where we've invested with our families, and, and we think it's really important to continue to foster that economic development for the Village, and, and take into consideration the family-oriented nature of these neighborhoods, and the safety of children. I mean, some of you may, I think, probably are aware that, that area also has been having significant traffic issues with people cutting through when traffic backs up from the train or, or during rush hour, cutting through from Berkeley to, and, and swinging around and driving down Long Common. There's been a lot of reckless driving, someone drove into our neighbor's shrubs because they were careening through out of frustration probably for the, the difficult traffic on Harlem. They don't understand that it's going to dead-end at the railroad tracks, and so they fly down, and then they back up, or they swing around, and it's, it's already been a problem. Residents there have already come and said, "We have an issue, and we need this to be addressed," and, and bringing additional traffic, and frankly, you know, just, you know, other, you know, safety concerns into the neighborhood really feels like a very inconsistent approach with how Riverside has been developing itself economically so far. Maintaining the 1,000-foot restriction that's in the Medical Use Act, right? I mean, this is already something that lots of people in Illinois have given a lot of consideration to, and made a determination that that was because of the sensitive use- And frankly, you know, just, you know, other, you know, safety concerns into the neighborhood really feels like a very inconsistent approach with how Riverside has been developing itself economically so far. Maintaining the thousand-foot restriction that's in the Medical Use Act, right? I mean, this is already something that lots of people in Illinois have given a lot of consideration to and made a determination that that was because of the sensitive use of, you know, buildings around dispensaries, that that was an appropriate restriction. And I haven't seen anything, looking at the documentation that's available to us, the residents on the board, that is contrary to what that determination that was made by the state as to medical use is and what is common with many other jurisdictions as well. I mean, I've seen in California, which has more experience with this than Illinois does, restrictions for libraries, daycares, schools in addition. I mean, all of these statutes have definitely taken into consideration, this very important consideration of what are the children in these communities being exposed to? And this is inappropriate. How is this going to be managed? Where you have these children living in close proximity to cannabis dispensaries. There's a balancing act and we have the opportunity to balance it the right way. And that's by maintaining that thousand-foot proximity buffer here and adding one for libraries as well. There's still area, it doesn't eliminate all of the possible locations. So there are still areas. I just want to say sort of one other thing about this. And, you know, this is an area where it's easy to sort of analogize and say, "Well, one business should be treated just like another." But the truth of the matter is, is that with cannabis, we don't have a lot of information about, we, the residents, and I haven't seen it, I think, I think we generally don't have a lot of information about what the potential impact of a dispensary is in terms of crime, in terms of safety, in terms of other considerations. You know, I read a study that was recently put out in 2019, which I think in the materials that were given to us, you know, all the studies were from 2016, 2017. University of Michigan studied that said 50% of medical cannabis users have driven while high in the past, after using, within two hours of using medical cannabis in the past six months, 50%. And one in five while they were quote, "very high." And this is the University of Michigan because Michigan is looking at this also. And, you know, there's not valid ways for testing whether someone, I mean, there's not a lot. You can't do like a DUI testing where you look and say, "Okay." So again, are we going to invite potentially safety issues into an area that is high-density children, high-use by children? I think that's absolutely the wrong way to approach this. There's an easy fix. It's the one that's already in the draft. It's the one that's already built into the Illinois Medical Act, User Act, and that's a thousand-foot proximity limitation for schools. And again, I encourage adding for libraries as well.
Director App, did you want to briefly summarize the EDC's recommendation?
Yes. So the EDC looked at this at their meeting last week. They had a special meeting. And as part of that discussion, they reviewed the draft tax amendment. They found that adult-use cannabis dispensaries could have a positive economic impact on the village, provided the regulations are not too limiting. They were supportive of allowing dispensaries as special uses in the B1C district only, but without any distance restrictions from other uses such as schools. The commission believed that the buffer restriction was too limiting and could prevent a dispensary from pursuing Riverside as a potential site. So that was their.
And that was unanimous, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Chief Whitson, did you want to pick up on security and safety concerns, please? Thank you.
Good evening. So I was asked to, by the manager and Director App, to appear at today's hearing to answer any questions that the commissioners may have and maybe brief you on a little bit of what my comments were to the village board at their meeting. So would you like me to start there or with the commissioners?
Do your summary first, please.
Okay. So at the village's board meeting, they just, the board members themselves asked if, what my concerns would be or my department's concerns would be if a dispensary opened up in Riverside. They did not ask for about a specific location. They just asked about in generalities what our concerns would be. And actually, the piece of legislation that got this recreational cannabis passed is probably one of the most restrictive and heavily regulated pieces of legislation I've ever seen. I serve on the Illinois Chiefs Legislative Committee. We were opposed to legal recreational cannabis. And at the end, the Illinois Chiefs never came off that. But, but actually, in the end, they negotiated many of the provisions that are in the current law where what we wanted to see. Because if you go back to the original law, they were, they, they were going to have pass-through dispensaries, which we were opposed to. Home delivery, certain amount of cannabis you could grow at home. There was a lot of other legisla, a lot of other items that were put in there that the Illinois Chiefs were able to get taken out. So that, that being said, they asked me about security procedures. Now, it should be noted that the state has primary obligation to do the regulations for these dispensaries. However, the local jurisdiction can also get involved. So one big piece of legislate, or one big piece I wanted for if this board and our village board approved it is what Director App said earlier. So like, like in many communities that have a mall or large medical facilities, the police really aren't allowed to enforce ordinances on there without an agreement because it's private property. So I wanted my officers to be able to do proactive policing if, whatever location we had a dispensary, to be able to do self-initiated activity and not be called by the business owner. And for example, we, we just can't go issue parking tickets or local ordinance citations or, and sometimes even make arrests without the complainant being the business. I did not want that. I wanted my officers to be able to pass through any parking lot, be able to issue citations, to be able to handle loitering problems if there were. I wanted input on what the signage would be. I wanted input on lighting for the property fencing and traffic studies. And even though the dispensary may open and be required to submit a traffic study to the village, our own traffic engineering firm, I wanted our firm to be able to review whatever the petitioner put in to make sure that it met our requirements. So the board was in agreement with that. That's what I came with. Director App was in agreement with that. Some of that is already in the legislation, but we wanted to be able to make, I wanted to be able to really codify that in whatever we pass. I also surveyed other communities. Nobody has recreational cannabis right now. So I contacted towns that have the medical cannabis and asked them if they had increased police activity. The ones that responded to me were Addison, North Aurora, Elmwood Park, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, and Deerfield. Each of those communities said that they had no increased activity with the medical marijuana outside of burglar alarms. One establishment had actual burglary that because they had an ATM in there and the ATM was stolen. And they had some traffic accidents and initially had a few calls of suspicious people. But in total, that was, they saw no more than five calls for police service to an establishment of criminal activity. Now, those are the only ones that answered my informal survey that I set around. But those are, those are communities that already have the medical marijuana. So it's really the only place I could go for the data. If you went to the national data, anybody can search the internet and you can go to the, the Google and you can look at the studies. And what you really have to look at is there's, I gave, when I talked to my board, I gave them the studies that were, said crime went up. And there were studies that said crime went down. There was one study in Colorado that said home values went up 6% because people were moving to Colorado who wanted to live in a state that had legal cannabis. And what you really need to look at in those studies is who's funding them? Because when you look at the ones where the crime went up, there was a lot of police organizations. There was also a lot of drug organizations, meaning drug task force organizations that funded those. And then some of the one, the other ones were being funded by, in some way or another, by the cannabis industry themselves. So I, I think I brought three and three studies. So there's really not a definitive answer right now. And the one study that I, the last study out of Colorado said that there really isn't enough data yet. They, they were waiting for at least a 10-year data reporting to, so, until they, the University of Colorado is going to make a definitive study. So, I mean, it's, it's both ways. It's really where you, where you fall on that issue. I also gave my, they, my board never asked me for my personal opinion, nor did I give it. That's really not my role, nor did the board ask me that. My, they asked me my professional opinion, how it would impact my department and what we would do to respond and if I thought we needed more resources if a dispensary was opened up. And in those cases, I do not believe we currently need any more resources. And we could handle a dispensary based on what I've known and what the research I did. One other component finally that they asked me is, "Did we have increased calls for service to places that sell liquor or tobacco in Riverside?" So I went to our computer system and looked at the amount of calls we had to places that sell alcohol and specifically the packaged alcohol. And we only had five calls for service in 2018 and three of those were retail thefts. And the other twos were intoxicated people that came into the store to buy alcohol. But when they arrived at the 7-Eleven or they arrived at the former Minuteman, they were already intoxicated. They showed up, they're already intoxicated. So the purchase of the alcohol didn't really play a role. We're not a community that has a retail theft. Those are really for the malls. We don't, we don't, we don't see a lot of that in my community. Just the hours of the liquor sales are restricted. Some of the other communities still sell liquor at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. That's, Riverside doesn't do that, at least packaged liquor. So the numbers were very low. So I just gave my board the facts as I knew them and gave them the, answered any questions that the board had. And if you go back to that board meeting and look at that video, there was a pretty good exchange, you could see myself in the board. But I think they were in line with some of the requests I would have if, if Riverside opens a dispensary.
And didn't you share one story, I think, from Colorado, that a dispensary opened up and the owners paid overtime for police to be parked outside?
Yes. So there was, there was a, a community that passed the cannabis, recreational cannabis. And it was kind of off of a residential area. It was, it wasn't on one, but it was off. And they were, the residents were concerned that at least at the beginning, you know, there would be this influx of people. So that community was able to talk to the establishment and they hired a police officer in a squad car just to sit across from the dispensary in a marked police car for the first 30 days that the dispensary is open. And the officer was just there as a presence so that they would get the message out that this place is open, the police know about it. And all the expense for that was paid by the dispensary that opened up. And then after the 30 days, they didn't report any other problems besides, at the beginning, they had some traffic issues and some parking issues, but no criminal activity. And one of the really important pieces is that, you know, there, I mean, this is, this is the only legislation I've ever seen that if your video camera goes out, you have to lock your door and leave. You have, it mandates two employees being on the premise. It says that the police must have access to your video. That's extremely rare. I wanted our board to put in, if they passed something, that you'd have to cooperate with police investigations. So, and which they were in agreement with. But so it is, it is a very, you know, whether you like the recreational cannabis or not, the piece of legislation is very restrictive and very well-written from the ones that I've seen.
And in terms of drug driving, we have two officers who have received specialized training in detecting drugged drivers, right?
Yes. So we have two D R E officers. That stands for Drug Recognition Expert. Their job is to do the D, not the drunk driving, it's the drugged driving. And last year, for example, in 2018, we made 19 arrests for drugged driving, but nine of those were over, were prescription drugs. And the rest were either for cannabis or heroin. Most of those, except for two, took place either on Harlem Avenue, Ogden Avenue, First Avenue, or 26. And seven of those involved auto crashes. So, and out of, out of the whole year, I mean, we have over 100 DUI arrests. So while you are seeing a spike in drugged driving going up, one of the big drivers in the drugged driving is really, is really prescription medication, mixing it with alcohol. But we do, we already have two officers on staff to handle that.
Which is unusual, right?
Yes. There's only 110 officers in the entire state of Illinois that have that certification.
Other questions for chief?
Yes. So in your research in the existing recreational cannabis facilities in, say, Colorado and California, did you find that most had an onsite private security presence?
Some did and some did not. And the reason I say that is because many police chiefs in Colorado initially, the dispensaries wanted to hire the police officers off-duty to do security. Well, the, the, the police chief didn't want his officers working there in uniform. So they were either forced to hire their own private security or, because they didn't mandate it. They didn't say you had to do that. So there were some that did and some that did not. And still to this day, they don't mandate that you have private security.
Other questions from the commission?
Yes, I have a question regarding, from your knowledge and experience in Riverside, what do you think will happen to what I assume is an existing marijuana sales market in Riverside? If there's a cannabis dispensary, legal cannabis dispensary?
There's always going to be a black market. They're going to under, they're going to undercut the legal cannabis because the legal cannabis is going to be taxed very high. Okay, so, and there'll always be some black market for cannabis. It certainly won't have the level and the professionalism that that's what they say. Because, you know, when you buy, if you open a dispensary, you have to walk out of the dispensary with it packaged and labeled in a certain way. They have a machine that puts it on there. So for example, if a police officer makes a stop one block from the dispensary, that one of the questions was, "How do you know that this was the cannabis bought at the dispensary versus this was the cannabis that was bought off the street?" Well, the cannabis that's bought off the dispensary has to, by Illinois statute, be in certain packaging, has to have certain labeling on it, has to be, the packaging has to be outside packaging and inside packaging. And then there's a machine in these labels. It's like a sticky label that they have to put on there. And, you know, every time that's run off, that's reported to the state of Illinois. So that's one way the police could tell the difference between what's bought on the street and what's, what's legal. But they're never going to get rid of cannabis that's black market. Even today in the states that have the recreational cannabis, they have, you know, black market. But the black, one of the things that the black market is doing, it's really going after the big distributors, the manufacturing deliveries, the people that are buying the small amounts, like maybe under 30 grams. Like right now in Illinois, it's, under 30 grams is not a crime. It's a, it's a parking ticket. It's a, it's a $200 fine. When they did the criminal justice reform, Springfield decriminalized under 30 grams. So I would, you know, if, if you asked me five years ago, we probably had, you know, 40, 50 cannabis arrests. Now we might have 60, 70 tickets. The only cannabis arrests we're making now, if it's a manufacturer delivery of a large amount, which Riverside doesn't experience a lot of. So once Illinois, once we fell in line with decriminalization under 30 grams, our, our arrests for cannabis went away and our tickets for cannabis went up. But they're, you're never going to get rid of the black market.
What was the incident over on Forest Avenue with the shooting? How much cannabis was involved in that incident?
That was, that was about 60 grams, but that was really more of a case than an individual. Now, while he was there to buy cannabis, he was there to, he purchased the cannabis with counterfeit money. And you, and if you know that story, once the individual who was selling the cannabis found out it was counterfeit, which was very quickly, he ran after him and was shooting at him. So there was a little bit of purchasing the cannabis and a little bit of somebody thinking that a drug dealer is not going to know phony money because this was really phony money. We could all tell it was phony. You wouldn't have to be a professional. So that was a little bit of, of both. But he, he, he had about two sandwich, if you put, what he was selling that kid was about two sandwich bags. And a sandwich bag would maybe hold 30 to 40 grams, another 30 to 40. So somewhere around 60 to 70 grams.
So that kind of low-level, small amount cannabis sales won't necessarily either increase or decrease based on your experience?
Well, you know, Colorado, it said in their reports that people wanted to seek out the safety of the legal cannabis, the packaging, the, the, they put it in their report. These are their words, not mine, but if you read it, the professional atmosphere of the dispensaries. So a lot of people that had to buy illegally, they said in their reports, were going to legal establishments. Not everybody, but a majority of the people said, "Well, why don't we just go buy it legally?" It is, it is going to be more money, but, you know, you're also not subjecting yourself for arrest or traffic stops or, you know, whatever else could happen there.
Right. Unless you're under 21.
Yes, absolutely. Under 21, absolutely. There's still a complete ban on that. And I don't know if it was the chairperson or Sonia that said, I, I've had, I've had emails to my office and saying, "Well, what are we going to..." emails to my office and saying, well, what are we going to do, Chief, if somebody's walking down Forest Avenue or the three-hundred block of Herrick and smoking, it's completely illegal. You call us if we find them. It's a tick, it's not an arrest, it's a citation. But it'll be, it, it's not legal to do that. Any amount.
That's also no different from, say, open container, where somebody's walking down the streets.
That's exactly right. Except for the fine is going to be higher.
I have one other question for you.
I think one of the concerns of the community is this concept that, um...
Can you put your mic closer?
Oh, sure. I have one other question, which is the community concern, I think, that people will buy cannabis and either very soon after purchasing it, or at some other point, be driving around within Riverside in an impaired state. Again, based on your experience, can you give us any guidance on what you think the future would hold?
I don't know that it'll, but we already have people that drive through that are intoxicated, either under the influence of drugs or prescription drugs. Oh, you know, I think two years ago, we had a hundred and thirteen total DUI arrests, you know, so we have that happening already. I will tell you that most of that are late-night incidents, they're not, you know, during the day and mid-afternoon. Yeah, so somebody, can somebody get in the car at the dispensary and light up in the parking lot? Theoretically, theoretically, they can. They can legally, but say they do that. You know, so they're going to be required to have video cameras on the outside and signage. It's either, hopefully the establishment would call us, or we would find them. But if they don't, and they get in the car and they drive away, could they drive down the block and pull it off the street at 26 and Harlem, or Ogden and Harlem somewhere, and take it out of it, roll it up and smoke it? They could, absolutely. Just like individuals do that when they go into liquor stores, they pull over and they, I, I can't tell you the amount of people we, we arrested that have open alcohol and they drink it while they're driving, they're literally drinking it. So yes, that, that, that could happen. But some of the studies have shown, if you've read some of those studies, that most people just, that go to the dispensary are buying it to go for home use. That, at least that's what they're initially telling us. So, yeah, I, it, I, could we prevent every case of that? No. But I do think that's where the powers of proactive policing and not us, not us having to wait to respond to a business owner to call us and say, this car's been in my parking lot two hours, this guy's been loitering in front of my business, you know, that the officers can drive through the parking lots and, and, and take action without getting the establishment involved in that. Because that, that takes a lot for them to do, say, you know, they're in the business taking care of people, right, and they're not, maybe not seeing what's going on in the parking lot. But I'm, I'm hoping that proper fencing, if, if the board goes with it, lighting, traffic patterns, parking patterns, would really curtail some of that activity. Where, wherever the board would choose to, to do that location.
Any other questions for Chief?
Sure. In your, Chief, in your research and in your professional opinion, how different or not is cannabis going to be from alcohol sales? Is it going to be similar? I mean, you've mentioned a number of comparisons.
You know, cannabis, smoking cannabis and cannabis possession is pretty common. And, I mean, when, when Illinois decriminalized thirty grams and under, you know, the attitude changed, for sure. You know, we stopped people that have maybe three or four or five grams on them because they're arrested for another incident, it doesn't have to do with the drug incident, maybe their driver's license is suspended, revoked, or they have a warrant for their arrest, and in the subsequent search, you find a small amount of cannabis, they could care less. It's a ticket. They don't, you know, before, it would have been a criminal arrest, even a small amount like that, we would have been bound by state statute to make a criminal arrest. So for those of you that follow that, the theory behind that was Illinois did not want to give people criminal records, fingerprint them, have a criminal record for the rest of their life on thirty grams or under. That's, that, that was what pushed that whole legislation, is a generation of people that would apply for college, would do all these stuff, and they had these small amount of cannabis arrests that you could never get rid of on your criminal history, never. Even, even in some of these expungements that they would allow, the FBI wouldn't, the FBI would not get rid of the fingerprints. So, you know, that, that was the theory behind that, and once Illinois passed that, the, the acceptance of cannabis just, we saw it just skyrocket. It's, you know, in both, unfortunately, young adults and adults themselves. So I think, you know, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a thing that, it depends on, I had one woman call me up, a resident called me up, and she told me it depended on when, what generation you grew up in, where you grew up, she told me. And, you know, there might be some truth to that, too. So, I mean, I, I don't, I think my role for the board, whatever their version is, or whatever they vote, is just advise the board what we can do to get the best security product we can, and work with whatever dispensary may or may not open.
That's one really quick question for you. Does the police department have any personnel who are under twenty-one years old?
No sworn personnel, we have civilian personnel, but nobody that patrols the street. So you have to be over twenty-one to be a police officer. But we do have civilian employees inside the station.
Okay, but no one who would be involved in one of these investigations?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chief? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
You need to be sworn in?
I do.
Please stand, please, and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Price-Daly. I live at 521 Berkeley Road. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old son and a six-year-old, six-year-old daughter who makes up part of the Blythe Park Elementary School, first, first grade class. We purchased our home two years ago in September. We moved to Riverside for the community, for the schools, for the, for the neighborhood. We wanted our children to grow up in a neighborhood where they could go to school with the kids that they lived across the street from, and we have loved it here. I just wanted to urge the board, to beg the board, to keep that thousand-foot mandate in place. We walk, just like, you know, other folks have said, we walk up to the Berwin Library, as well as the Riverside Library. My kids scoot, they bike, they skate, we are all over the community. We already have a lot of concerns with cars driving through our street and at very fast clips. I'm terrified my kids are going to get hit by a car. And I am worried about additional people parking on the street, because there's not a ton of parking at the building we're talking about at the Title Max, or the former, I was not here when it was ever a Title Max, it's always been a vacant building. But, you know, if, if it's a daycare or another business and you have people parking on the street, they're going to drop their kids off, pick them up, and they're going to leave, I don't know who's going to be coming into my community. I don't know who's going to be parking on the street across, in front of my house, right? Because I'm within a stone's throw from this location that, that you all are considering. And I just ask for the safety of my children, and for the other families on the streets, that you keep this thousand-foot perimeter in place. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I need to be sworn in, don't I?
Yes, you do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I knew you were going to want to speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kristin Phelan-Soderzky. I live at 576 Bird Road. Shameless plug, I'm also co-owner of 34 East Lounge, so come stop by for a drink. I also am concerned, if we do happen to use that old vacant Title Max building, would you consider building a cul-de-sac where that Berkeley Harlem entrance is, because of the cars going in and out? Would that ever be an option, or even, you know, a topic of discussion to build that blockage there?
That wouldn't be our purview, that would be the board's purview. Do you, either of you have anything to add?
No.
Nothing.
This is just a recommended body that doesn't have anything to do with that type of incident.
Okay, fair. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Do you need to be...
This is a gentleman behind you, who's going to be sworn in first? I haven't been sworn in.
Right. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge?
I have said yes, I do.
Hi, my name's Jeff Sormack.
I'm, I've been a resident of Riverside for about twenty-five years, and I understand what some of the people are saying, and I, I, I get what they're, where they're coming from. I grew up in the, along Ogden Avenue, and I, this is just my own personal experience growing up. There were strip clubs up and down there. As a child, I didn't even know it was in those buildings. I mean, because it wasn't a place I was going to. It may have been a strip club, it may have been a manufacturing building, it may have been a card shop or hobby shop, I knew it was a hobby shop, I would go there. So I think concerns, just going through that experience, having my kids grow up in Riverside, that I think parenting and you'll, they'll get where they need to go and where they don't need to go, and it's just not a concern what's going on in there. That's just my, my point. The other point, too, is I think the spirit of the law is a thousand square feet, is to keep that away from schools in the face of children, and what they're doing in, in students. If you look at where Morton High School is compared to Riverside, it's three, four-thousand feet away where the children are going to be congregating, way over on Home Avenue and that. So I do believe that the spirit of the law, if it were Riverside Brookfield High School, where I attended and where my children attended, a thousand square feet would feel like you're right on top of that school, and I get that. So my point is, is the spirit of the law a thousand square feet, or is it, we don't want to be on the, on top of the, on top of the school where we're in the face? So I just wanted to make those two little points, just, yes, I'm trying to formulate my opinion on everything. Thank you.
Mr. Tusk?
I just wanted to clarify, I respect the opinions of nearby residents talking about specific locations, and as it relates to the thousand-foot rule. But I do just want to clarify that what's always lost in the arguments that I hear over cannabis is the medical component, and I know that, you know, adult use in Colorado, it probably takes, you know, statistics will show that, you know, it's probably ends up being, you know, seventy-five percent of the revenue comes from adult use, and twenty-five's left coming from the medical. But myself, just to clarify, I'm a card-holding adult for a condition, I'm also the caregiver for my twelve-year-old autistic son, who takes cannabis oil every day, so I'm his caregiver as well. And I can just attest in, you know, by Israeli studies and other things, that it's, it's a life changer. It's changed our lives, and I'd love to tell stories to people that just haven't really understood the whole, you know, the whole science of cannabis, and where it's heading, you know, from a medical perspective, aside from the people who want to, you know, have it for their barbecue, so. And, and, and like you said, and buy it legally with the label on it, that's third-party tested for, for once, and not in a parking garage. But I think, I, that's why I just don't, I just don't, it doesn't resonate whether, you know, wherever it is, so much to me that it's, it's an image, I think the image of the, the new build-out and everything of dispensaries is more along the lines of an Apple Store than it is a old head shop with Bob Marley posters, and that's just a fact, and it's going to continue that way, number one. Number two is the stories, you know, that are going to emanate from this retail facility that are going to be in this local paper and the news, are going to be about what it's doing for my son, who's a classmate of, you know, of other kids. And there's going to be kids like them in school that are taking cannabis oil. And the fact of the matter is, they're going to want to get it at their very professionally-run, you know, dispensary as close to their house as humanly possible. Right now, I drive thirty minutes for medical, and I, I sure hope I don't have to drive thirty minutes forever, and I hope that when it goes adult use on January one, that I'm not waiting in a line four blocks long with, in a, in a shopping center that has four parking spots, and, and that I can't get my medical, you know, daily needs medicine. So I just want to, from that perspective, I just want everyone to always lose the medical perspective of cannabis, because it's very critical and will always be a very critical component, and these restrictions relate to medical and adult that you're ultimately choosing to, to enact, so. Thank you.
Does anybody have questions for people who have spoken? Ms. Hartford?
I think the point about keeping in mind the medical use is important, and a lot of parents, a lot of people have sort of changed and evolved on sort of the place of cannabis dispensaries because of the valuable medical use of them. What I am talking about, and I think a lot of parents are thinking about in Riverside, is what are the, what's the appropriate balancing act? And I think a lot of the comfort level with having a dispensary in Riverside comes from having confidence that our village is going to put in place the appropriate parameters around that dispensary. And it's very upsetting to me to hear the thought that there would be no proximity restriction whatsoever, a dismissal of the thousand-foot proximity restriction that was built into the medical use, without any real basis, other than looking from what I can see, is that there was a comfort level with that thousand-foot proximity restriction until it was discovered that it would block out certain commercially-zoned areas. And then people started working back and saying, well, what could we do instead? But that's not taking into consideration the community-oriented nature of our village, and it's not taking into consideration the safety of the families that are living in this village. So I think that's very much a wrong approach to thinking about this. You know, I look, all of us want to get educated on this, and frankly, it's a lot of busy professionals, and we've kind of heard about this in short order. It's not that there haven't been efforts to sort of put information out, there have been some, but everyone's working crazy hours, and they're parenting busy families, and, and, you know, they just don't know. I found out that Riverside was even considering this a few days ago, probably forty-eight hours ago. And, you know, you start researching, you want to be informed, you don't want to be reactionary, you don't want to be knee-jerk, you want to be fair. But part of that is a bargain that we feel, that the village is also going to take into consideration the, the concerns that are legitimate concerns about having proximity restrictions, which are extremely standard. I mean, Los Angeles has a proximity restriction, not just for schools, but for daycares, for libraries, for group homes, for, you know, all kinds of, for religious institutions as well, for parks. None of those things have been even discussed with regard to this. So it is not nearly the most restrictive-type proposal at all that's been put forward, and I think a lot of community members have said, well, with that type of reasonable restriction, this can make a lot of sense. But to have it backed out without hearing really any basis, other than it opens up an additional commercial property in an area where there, it's really, doesn't fit in to have that commercial property made available, given all the other activity that's gone to that area, is, is pretty upsetting. So I think that, again, you know, a lot of the support for this is based on an understanding that there will be a thousand-foot proximity restriction to schools, that this is a special type of business, we are all learning as we go, and it is not thoughtful or frankly consistent with the, the way the village has proceeded in the past to take a risk and just see what happens, that that thousand-foot restriction should really be in place.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions for Chief Weitzel?
I do actually have a question.
Okay, can you go back to the podium, please?
Sure, sure, can. I think you...
I wanted to make sure I heard you properly, because I know a lot of this is based on, you know, experience or what you've seen, and I thought, I heard you say that most of the drug-driving arrests that have occurred have occurred in the area of Harlem, was that correct?
Most of our DUI arrests either take place on Harlem, 26th Street, Ogden, or First Avenue, that's a majority.
So I really want to point out, that's precisely the area that we're talking about putting in a cannabis dispensary, and it's just another reason...
in a cannabis dispensary. And it's just another reason to have, to consider the special context. I mean, the state made it possible for villages to develop their own rules around this for a reason, so they could consider the special context of their particular villages. And I haven't seen anything from any other Illinois municipalities that would have something less than 100, 1,000-foot restriction for schools. In fact, I did look, and I found that for Lincolnwood, for example, their proposal, which is significantly more extensive than what Riverside has proposed, they're proposing 1,000-foot restriction from pre-existing public or private preschools, or elementary, or secondary schools, or daycare centers, or homes, group daycare homes, part-day childcare facilities, 200 feet from parks, and 200 feet from religious institutions. That's another sort of similarly situated village in this area. The point is that 1,000 feet has been consistently recognized as, you know, throughout the United States, as different states consider this, but specifically in Illinois, as a safe distance, as an appropriate distance for this type of business to be from schools. And that Riverside should really adopt that same restriction.
Somebody like to make a motion to close the public portion of the hearing? Second?
I'll second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I think first, we should have a general discussion before we get into any specific motions. Anybody have any specific questions first or thoughts?
Can I ask a question of the attorney?
Of course.
Where did the floor area requirements come from? Where 75% of the floor area has to be obligated towards the cannabis organization?
I believe that's-
Sorry, I guess, what's the back-
Oh, that's state.
Yep. Do you know what the justification was for that? Or if you don't, I understand.
I'm sorry. I don't have any particular insight on that point.
I guess that gets to another question. A number of the state requirements are also reflected in this ordinance. How did we go about deciding which ones to repeat?
You know, you don't really have to repeat any of them. It doesn't, if they're not in there, they still apply.
Right. And that's why I'm asking.
So, you know, I put them in there just for clarity's sake, but I certainly don't think it changes much to take those out, if anything. Sometimes there's just a comfort level in repeating, "You must comply with these state laws."
On the other hand, it can make it look like our code is very onerous.
Right. So to the extent that there's a feeling of, while we have these pages of regulations, and that may cause the dispensary to pass us over, you know, as you make that balance, as the public talked about, the balancing act, that's certainly something that's easy to take out, and it makes it less of a lengthy thing without changing the impacts. And this, I'm not sure you're the right answer, maybe Chief Weitzel is. The majority of dispensary owners, are they large corporations or individuals? And this, what the point of the question is, is a larger organization will certainly know what the rules are ahead of time as they go looking for an ideal site to locate.
Right. So the bar to enter this field is fairly high and expensive in terms of cost. So there, as the chief alluded to, there's, you know, it's a 610-page act. It's highly regulated. That's in, you know, supplemented by rules that all of the four state agencies involved are now drafting. And there's high application fees, sometimes, you know, triple figures, to get your application before the state. And at least initially, the places that will have an opportunity to open January 1st are existing medical dispensaries that have the option under the act to seek out a second site for recreational cannabis. And so certainly, those organizations are experienced in all the facets of administering cannabis under at least the Compassionate Care Act. And that's why they were given the opportunity to kind of, as we come up to January 1st, and the state wanted to get things up and running, they thought, "Those are the logical people. They already have the supply chain in place from the cultivation centers, and their understanding of how the regulations work at the state level." So that's why they were given the opportunity to do that. As we get later on, next year, you know, it will open up to additional places. And we don't know what they will look like, but the initial ones are going to be fairly well-established and well-versed in the law. So, and Chief, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, the only, I haven't seen what you refer to as a mom-and-pop shop. Even the medical marijuana ones are corporations. And the state lays out exactly what background investigation the owners of those businesses have to go through the corporation. So it's pretty well-laid out. It's even more restrictive than the liquor license applications.
To add to that, I mean, these are, the regulations require things like you have to have at least two employees working at one time. If any of your security system goes down, video goes down, if you can only have one person there, you can't operate during that time. So I think the idea is that this is not something that's just going to be, quote-unquote, "a mom-and-pop shop," where it's, you know, going to be just one person working there. I think the state is looking for it to be, not necessarily large corporations, but more corporate organized.
So, and this is-
Can you put your mic a little bit closer?
Sure. So, in essence, we are certainly saying that any dispensary is going to be professionally run due to the financial and legal and regulations imposed. And so we will end up with a more, less of a loose regime of just dispensing it at will.
I think that's probably safe to say. And there have been mergers, so some of these corporations now operate in multiple states.
That's true.
But they buy in-state.
That is awesome.
Made in Illinois.
Grown.
I have a question about timing.
As far as someone getting their license from the state of Illinois, do they need to get their zoning in place before they get a license? Or do they get a license, and then they come to us?
Right. As part of their license application, they need to be able to show that they comply with the municipality zoning regulations.
Okay.
As a reminder, what are the distance requirements for alcohol sales in Riverside?
Per state law, they are 100 feet from churches-
Churches or schools.
Churches and schools.
I guess it's church.
So 100 feet for churches and schools, 1,000 feet from just schools, is what we're looking at then?
Right. And again, that's just a number that's put out for discussion purposes. It's nothing what you're tied to. What the state law says about, well, first of all, there's medical cannabis, which already exists. And as one of the participants was saying, there are restrictions on medical cannabis in terms of a dispensary. And it's a list of, you know, 1,500 feet from a number of different uses, and I can read it. But when it came time to enact this, the legislature did not choose to include distance limitations for recreational cannabis dispensaries. What they said instead was a local government could put in reasonable distance regulations for uses it deemed to be sensitive. And so that's kind of the charge that you guys have to carry out. And the board has to carry out, is, you know, what uses do we deem sensitive? And what's an appropriate distance limitation, if any?
So the medical dispensary buffer limit's still five?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those can't be modified.
Okay.
That's or cannot be prohibited?
A medical dispensary cannot be prohibited?
Right, cannot be prohibited altogether.
Whereas a recreational could be prohibited altogether. The state statute gives us that authority to completely opt out and say a recreational dispensary or other business is strictly prohibited within the village. And that is the route that LaGrange Park chose to go. So they just voted this week on that.
So, Sonia, prior to potentially this ordinance being enacted, how would we have dealt with a medical cannabis dispensary?
They would have to follow the state statute. So that's the 1,000 or 1,500-foot from any preschool, daycare, school.
Right.
It's a retail sales.
They would have just been considered retail sales, and they could have gone into any location that allowed-
Provided they met those requirements.
Sure.
Correct.
So I have a, I'm wondering if you could explain a little bit more the practical difference between permitted use and special use under a zoning code? The only difference that I can tell easily is that if we have a special use, then we're specifically looking at a location, or we're allowed to look at a specific location where someone wants to put in a business. But pretty much every other restriction that we could impose through a special use, can we put it into the use standards of the code for any particular business, like a cannabis dispensary?
The, that's almost true. So you're correct. A permitted use would not need any particular zoning relief, but they would still have to comply with use standards if we chose to put some in, like our proposed now. A special use is something that we've generally decided is okay in a particular zoning district, but because of its peculiar impacts, we want to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And it gives you the ability to attach specific conditions to the approval, right? So there's a list of, you know, you can come up with whatever's appropriate in terms of the various aspects of operating that business that make it okay at that location. So when we look at the list of things that we have in the ordinance, the draft that you have before you as the use regulations, if we were to switch over and say, "Okay, it's going to be a permitted use," you could keep a large number of those. The ones that we would probably want to strip out are ones that are too subjective for just somebody to be able to make a decision on. So for instance, you know, I don't think we could have somebody come in with a plan for beautification of the property, right? Because who's to decide whether that's appropriate or not? And another example would be, let me see what I got here. So when we talk about things like parking plans, well, we're not, you know, we would maybe just say, "Well, you need to comply with certain parking requirements." And, you know, it's set forth for all our commercial businesses. But, you know, and we want to see a plan, but as long as that plan met those base standards, I don't know that we would go into considering and, you know, give that to staff to say yes or no, because who's to say? It either complies with our code or it doesn't, right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so. So you're saying that you couldn't really have many, any additional parking restrictions would have to already be found somewhere in our code? We couldn't put in extra restrictions like you?
Right. Because if a permitted use, whatever we are putting in the use regulations, we'd need to apply everybody. Okay? So a lot of the things could still apply. You know, we can require them to cooperate with the police. We can make sure that there's no odors emanating from the property. They comply with our sign code. There's no onsite consumption. All those things are fine, whether it's permitted or special.
What about the building enhancements? Not the beautification, but the building enhancements?
That's the other one I was thinking is, you know, we can't really make a judgment call as to whether, okay, we have enough building enhancements or-
Specifically, though, the enhancements seem to be related to security and lighting. And maybe, as Chief Weitzel was talking about, the fencing of the parking lot. Could those be included under permitted use?
Yeah, we could, you know, we can't make a permit, like a decision based on those, but we could ask them to provide that information to the chief for his review. What's the lighting going to be? What's the security going to be? And does he feel it meets a baseline of sufficiency? And we could try to build that into it.
And for review, but not review and approval?
Yeah, I'd have to see, I mean, you know, we can go as far as we can if those things, if you think those things are appropriate.
Well, I don't, I mean legally, I'm just wondering if it's easier to get those things accomplished with a special use, where you could have review or review and approval of plans like that? Because I think a lot of the concern would be safety in traffic, the parking, issues like that.
It is easier with a special use, absolutely. But that's not to say that we wouldn't do our best to keep them in if you wanted to make it a permitted use.
Jennifer?
Just thinking about that line of things, if we thought that lighting was a particular issue, we could put in the use standards that parking lots need to have a minimum foot candle standard that they need to apply for. And if they don't meet it, then they need to come back for a variation-type thing, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Or, you know, establish parking per whatever square footage, a minimum parking standard and all those things.
Parking and say you need more than you would usually need for a commercial use. And the B1, you could do that.
So we could spell these things out, rather than leave it as a question, "How are you going to provide security?"
Yes. And as the chief alluded to, I mean, the security and lighting issues have to be addressed as part of their state licensing, too. So they will have that information and provide to us. With regard, and this is, I'm asking for an opinion, which you might not be able to provide. With, considering the volume of legislation that this represents, do you see that there is any appetite at this point for the legislature to change things anytime soon with regards to how restrictive or how onerous it is?
I believe there absolutely will be a, what we call a trailer bill in the fall veto session to address certain subjects that are not entirely clear under the act. So clarifications, I don't know how much they would revisit substantively, but there are, you know, internal-
There's cleanup work to do.
Cleanup work. There's internal inconsistencies. There's clarity problems. So they're definitely going to bring something forward to try to address questions that have been raised.
But right now, there's no push to massively rewrite the bill.
But I haven't heard of a push for, "Let's put hard distance limitations," or let's, you know, not more substantive things like that.
Since you've, since you've got, since your firm has read through the whole thing and provided the summary, I figure you have the best insight on that right now.
Yeah. And so whatever changes they may enact during the fall veto session would be done prior to the January 1st implementation date. So we wouldn't be aware of those, and if we needed to address any of them.
And we would have the opportunity to look at what's been changed and address it. If it, say, goes away from the Illinois law, we could address it in our own ordinance.
Yep.
Can you, I'm a little confused about the hours that it can be open. Again, versus, permitted versus special use. I understand that if it's a special use, we can- permitted versus special use. I understand that if it's a special use, we can set limits and stuff like that. But if we go the permitted use route, can we set hours other than 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yeah, I, I thought about that today. And I think if, if you guys decide, for instance, because our B1 district is almost entirely backs up to residential and we think that as a general matter, we want a use regulation that applies to all dispensaries that have shorter hours than what the state law allows that you could do that. But it would have to apply to everybody. You can't do it on a case by case basis. So right now, it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. But if you said, well, we're going to allow this as a permitted use in the B1, but we think it's more appropriate to be 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
All dispensaries or all businesses?
Dispensaries.
You think that would be acceptable? It would be hard to challenge.
I do. I'm not sure who, who would challenge it, but I, I think it's defensible again based on the, you know, traffic and volume considerations, the nature of the existing businesses on there that generally aren't maybe open at 6:00 AM or as late as 10:00 PM, all those, all those kinds of considerations. And just as somebody alluded to earlier, the fact that this is just a different type of use than a lot of typical retail uses, we have, we have the ability to, to do that sort of thing.
Sonia, what businesses along Harlem stay open as late as 10:00 PM? Do you happen to know?
Um, I think mostly you're probably looking at our gas stations.
And they do stay open 10:00 or later?
Mm-hmm.
I think El Ferro's is staying open until 11:00.
Okay. They're not open yet, are they?
Nope, not yet.
Do we have time restrictions on liquor sales?
Yes, the liquor license restricts.
And what are they?
I believe it's, is it 10:00 or 11:00 PM for packaged?
11:00.
11:00 PM for packaged and then for consumption, it depends, but it can allow it as late as 2:00 AM.
And how early?
11:00? 11:00 AM?
11:00 AM daily?
Yes, for packaged.
For packaged.
I think it's similar for consumption as well.
So edibles are allowed for sale, right?
Yes.
It's not consumption?
Correct.
Very important to clarify that.
If we were going to do time restrictions, would it be possible to do separate time restrictions for medical versus retail sales, thinking of, you know, the ones more like a pharmacy, that people may need to go there on the way to work in the morning to pick up their medication?
I, I think that would be justifiable, yeah.
Is there an interest in limiting hours rather than letting the businesses work it out if they think it's important?
I think 6:00 AM is very early.
I agree. That, I'm more worried about the early than the late, yeah.
And I, I mean, if we could say that, if it's medical, 6:00 AM is appropriate, but recreational, I feel like would not be.
The Oak Park one opens at eight? Is that what I remember from the EDC?
I think it's eight to seven.
That sounds right.
So they limit themselves already?
And clearly, they thought they could be successful within that limitation.
Right.
Right, so it, it becomes kind of, again, it goes to the balance, right? If you limit the hours and somebody else does it, maybe they pass you over to go somewhere else. But in the interest of finding it to be appropriate to locate in the B1, you can certainly make that decision.
This is a question to Sonia, I guess. When ED, when the Economic Development Commission was looking at this, did they consider the transitional commercial at all? Or was it always just, let's stick to Harlem?
They discussed it a little bit. I don't think they were, they were not necessarily opposed to the transitional commercial, but they didn't necessarily feel that it had to be included. So I don't think there was a lot of appetite for the central business district. They discussed the transitional commercial a little bit, just in the potential of, with the Bank of America closing and potential redevelopment if something, you know, a new retail center were to go in. And then you have the vacant building that's next to the parking lot that's, they had the ATM in it, that, you know, the, the B1C ends at the parking lot and then that vacant building is in the transitional commercial. So there was thought that if somebody wanted to build a, you know, like a strip center or something there, that it would probably include that other parcel. And so there was a little bit of banter about that, but ultimately they didn't take one, a stance one way or the other, whether that should be included, but.
Sonia, do you have any opinion on, or maybe Attorney Morris, any opinion on going in, in the next couple of years? Are there going to be recreational only cannabis dispensaries? Or given maybe the economics of scale or whatever, will most of these businesses want to have both types of outlets?
I think they're going to want both, but I don't know for certain.
So because of the 1,500-foot buffer, that eliminates the north side of the B1C quarter anyway if.
Mm-hmm. I can't imagine, since they're opening up, my thinking behind that is since they're opening up the first licenses to the ones that are medical already, that those would want to continue to be medical dispensaries as well. And so they'd be doing the business for, for both.
Yeah, I don't know what the plans are to expand the number of medical licenses, but the state is going to be determining the number of recreational licenses going forward. But the preliminary plans are to build up to about 500 in the next several years.
So there's a limited number of medical licenses and it's.
Yes, currently, yep.
It's locational, so it's not like you already have one and you can open up another branch.
Right, they're broken down by certain numbers within state police.
Certain districts.
Okay.
I wouldn't necessarily proceed with our recommendation under the assumption that anything that might come to Riverside would have both medical and recreational.
Right, I, I, I would guess there's going to be more recreational than our, but I don't know.
So I have another question about enforcement. So we have restrictions right now, the way the draft ordinance is written. And they could be made part of a permitted use, they could be discussed through a special use process. Can you discuss a little bit about what, how are those restrictions enforced under those different types of realms? I mean, let's say we want building enhancements and someone falls down on their lighting requirements or whatever it might be. If it's a special use versus, versus a permitted use, is there any difference in our, in our ability to enforce those provisions?
That's an interesting question. So we, we aren't going to have traditional business licenses like we would because the state is the licensing authority in this case. And when you have a business license, you have the ability to revoke it, right? But whether it's a permitted, and if it's a special use, then we always have the threat of the special use being revoked because you're not in compliance with whatever conditions we put on it. But we also have tools, if it is a permitted use, in that if they're no longer meeting our use regulations that we have in our zoning code, then they are not conforming and we can take some certain enforcement actions against them. And it's also important to remember that the state, as a licensing authority, is going to be, it says in the act, they'll do random inspections, they'll be out in force, and we as a community can report any violations to the state as well. And they, like we do with certain liquor code violations, and they come out and take enforcement action as well. So I think under any of those scenarios, there are enforcement mechanisms that we can utilize.
And you said that there would be security and lighting requirements under the state law? They have specific requirements?
Is the thinking that we'll be going through the proposed ordinance sort of line by line? Because I have a lot of specific questions and comments. I'm not sure if I should hold those, though.
I think there are three areas that we want to discuss where, what our recommendation might be. And I want to get a feel, straw poll for that. And then we'll go through and see, because as Attorney Morris says, we could throw this out. Well, we wouldn't do that to you. But we don't have to recommend anything that's in here. We can make other recommendations. So if we're ready to start that kind of discussion, unless we still have specific questions. So right now, a microbrewery is a permitted use. A craft distillery is a permitted use. A tattoo parlor is a permitted use and the B1C. So as a retail establishment, but a special kind of one with protections, a dispensary could be a permitted use, assuming, again, we could get the right protections into the code. What are your thoughts on recommending as a permitted use, recommending as a special use?
I, I personally think that a special use is appropriate because it's a business that we don't understand. So that allows us to look at particular sites, whether we think they're appropriate, you know, traffic issues. And it gives us the eradication ability. I don't, I don't know that the enforcement for a permitted use is as easily enforced or as effective as the ability to revoke a special use. So I think initially, it's a special use.
Do you agree with that, that we couldn't get traffic plans as a permitted use?
Um, like I said, we can require them to turn in a traffic plan. And I would do my best to word it in a way that would give us as much authority as I think we could have. It's, it's not the same as having a full review before a body like this where you're making comments on the placing conditions because we have to be even with everybody. So you've got to be, have objective standards that they're able to meet if it's a permitted use. So things like a traffic plan gets a little more challenging.
I find this to be a very difficult question. I, I see reasons for either making it a permitted use because it does seem very similar to a lot of the other, you know, alcohol-related businesses that we allow. And, you know, a brew pub, why is this that much different than a brew pub? In fact, a brew pub could have a lot more vehicular traffic and a lot more people walking through parking lots and all the rest. I'm not sure what this business will look like, if it's going to be like a drugstore, which, you know, is not very busy, or if it's going to be, you know, something more like a brew pub or something like that. I'd like the idea of a special use because we can impose, we can look at the specific location of where it would go in. And we can, I think it would be easier. It would give us more control over things like a parking plan, like a traffic plan, like issues like, like that. So I, I lean towards doing a special use. Another, I think if we make it a special use, though, one of the specific standards in the special use part of the ordinance is that when you grant a special use, you have to look at the impact on nearby, the value of nearby properties. And I think that could be difficult when we're going through the special use process. So that's a consideration I think everyone on this board should be aware of, that that is something we'd have to look at and make a determination on. It's my understanding, we'd have to make a determination on that when we grant a special use. So I'm not sure if you're looking for a definitive answer from me as to where I, where I am permitted versus special use. We'll give you some extra time.
Okay, I'll hear some other viewpoints.
What about you guys?
Um, I think it falls more along the lines of the permitted use, similar business types. It's not onsite consumption, so I'd say it opposes far less traffic than a brew pub, say. Having a sister that lives in Colorado and seeing the traffic that goes in and out of these places, I, I promise it's a far more mundane business than, than is imaginable. It, it does closely resemble a pharmacy. I'm, I'm in favor of permitted use.
I'm having a lot of trouble with the notion of consistency here because, as you pointed out earlier, there are, you know, things like tattoo parlors and tobacco stores, alcohol, body piercing, cash for gold. Those are all permitted uses that don't have any sort of use standards. And I recognize some of those are licensed elsewhere, so there are some control over them. But, so to me, I think it would, I'm leaning towards looking at cannabis as permit, a permitted use, but I would want to see us have some really clearly defined use standards. And especially with regard to parking, since I know our code right now doesn't have any parking requirements for businesses of a certain size. A lot of the supplementary material that we have, like the ICMA report, has some case studies where it seemed to be, parking seemed to be the biggest issue with retail establishments. So I think that's something we'd need to look at closely and that meshes with my experience. I work in a community that has two medical dispensaries. And the only problem there is parking at certain times of day, which I would think, you know, once you expand it to retail, that's, that demand's only going to grow. So I think that's something that we would need to define and don't necessarily need to look at it on a case by case basis. I think the use itself mandates a parking standard.
So to be clear, are parking requirements for buildings less than 3,000 square feet, there are no requirements for off-street?
Correct. So in the B1 and the B2 for buildings 3,000 square feet or less, there is zero parking required. And then it's one per 400 square feet above, for the amount above that 3,000 square feet.
Joel?
I'm leaning towards permitted, similar to some of the arguments Sean and Jennifer made. I think parking will be an issue just because, well, because of economics. The, the money that is expected to be derived from these establishments demands a high flow-through of customers. So customers are absolutely going to be, parking is going to be an issue. On the other hand, I think parking can be addressed in a permitted description, in the use requirements.
Do you have any thoughts on that happening?
Parking restrictions?
Making sure that parking is taken care of if it's permitted?
We can certainly add a specific parking standard for this type of use and add it to the parking standards table. If we're looking at it being similar to retail uses, I think those standards are typically around one per 400, one per 500 square feet. This is a fairly typical retail use parking standard. And since this is kind of functioning as a retail use, I think that would be a reasonable, pardon me, parking standard that we could incorporate either in the use standards or into the parking table, whichever would be more appropriate. I would say probably putting it in the parking standards would be the best place to put it, but we can always just put it under the use standards as well.
I think a parking standard should go with the parking standards. Makes sense.
Right, I would have my, we don't really have a lighting section per se, so. so that might be somewhere where it would go under the use, the use standards. But parking has an easy place for it to get plugged into, to have a specific standard for that use.
Because there's limited parking on Harlan, and we don't want people parking on residential streets.
Correct.
And I think that putting in a parking standard tends to, it will automatically restrict where owners are potentially looking at. I mean, let's be honest, this is a commercial facility that's intended to generate revenue, and lots of it. They're going to be going to places with parking and access, and they're not going to be in a 25-foot-wide storefront. Not with the additional requirements of security and lighting and everything else.
Jackie, do you have a column yet?
Do I have a choice? I mean, for permitted versus special? Well, I think the comments about it, Sean's comment about it being less traffic perhaps than a brew pub was interesting to me because it is more like a drugstore. People go in, they get what they need, they come back out. And they're not, they're not consuming on the premises. And that's illegal for them to consume on the premises or in the parking lot. So I am leaning towards special use, I mean, a permitted use, but not if we don't feel that restrictions for parking and traffic and security, although maybe the state will take care of security if we don't feel we can impose those. Because I think otherwise, we could have a really messy situation.
I am leaning toward permitted. I don't see this business use as any different from the current permitted uses. But as others have said, only if those protections that chief wants, that the residents want, that the board wants, can be put into the code. So that would be my opinion. What about the 1,000-foot buffer? EDC was adamant that that not go forward. But that's their commission and their recommendation. What are your thoughts? I suppose if it's permitted, if we were to vote to recommend permitted, I guess that buffer goes out. What are your thoughts on the buffer, separate from permitted or special use? Just your thoughts on the buffer?
Well, you can have it either way.
You can put it in use.
I'll admit that I was originally willing to be a little bit more liberal with the distance requirement. But I think because it's already set in the medical use, that's a fine standard to maintain.
I agree. I think the 1,000 feet is appropriate. Although I think it's appropriate for schools. I don't think that it should be applied to other uses, including, you know, what was it, 5B that talked about daycares and in-home daycare and a lot of other uses. I think it should just be for schools.
I agree with that. That's fair.
Honestly, I could go either way. I'm not sure.
Well, we have a map showing, sorry. Oh, I didn't, no, okay. I lean towards not having a buffer that's any greater than the buffer that exists for alcohol sales. Because I, there isn't, for all the reasons we've discussed about consumption and all the rest, I don't, I understand there could be a concern about what this business is going to look like and how it's going to impact the neighborhood. But I still don't see the need for any buffer beyond maybe 200, 300 feet, maybe 500 feet. And then the other issue that I have with the buffer is that it's 1,000 feet, as my understanding is, from the edge of school property. So if you have a very large high school campus, like, I don't know if Morton West qualifies as very large nowadays, when you look at greenfield suburbs. But that, if you start, it makes less sense to me. It seems very hidebound to say it's the edge of the school property as opposed to where the school building actually is. So that's another problem I have with applying the buffer there. And if you use a 1,000-foot buffer and you apply it to the schools within Riverside, I don't think there's an impact on any of the B1C properties. The only way there is an impact is if you include the edge of the Morton West High School property.
I think you have to include all pre-existing schools, correct? If you include a restriction on schools, it would be all pre-existing schools, not just those in your municipality?
Yeah.
Wait, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, for all the elementary schools, nearby elementary schools, if you apply the 1,000-foot buffer, then that's the result, is you're not, that falls with, that doesn't impact any of the B1C district. The only way the B1C district is impacted is when you apply it to the edge of the high school property as opposed to the high school building or any of their outbuildings.
So we were provided a map that mapped 1,000-foot buffer and its effects, and a 500-foot buffer and its effects.
I think my issue or hesitation with the buffer is exactly that issue, that if the idea of the buffer is that you're there for the benefit of the students at those schools, I don't know what benefit the Morton West students are receiving from this buffer from the furthest point of the furthest edge of the fenced-in athletic field. It doesn't, there's just not a very strong nexus there for me. So that's, I'm just not sure, really, who's benefiting from this particular application of it. So if there were Riverside grade schools adjacent or within 1,000 feet of any of the commercial areas, that would be a different story. But I don't know, this just seems really maybe not within the spirit of what the buffers were intended to do.
With the 7-Eleven at the corner, right next to it, that sells spirits?
Yeah, that's another point, yeah.
So what are your thoughts on 500 feet versus, 1,000 versus 0? 1,000?
I think 1,000's appropriate. And I think with regard to being from the edge of the property, if you consider where students congregate, I think athletic fields are a prime example of where they would congregate. So to me, it makes sense for it to be from the edge of the school property.
But you still prefer 1,000 feet over 500 feet?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
I think Councilman Henigan has changed my opinion. And I think that's a fair argument, then, to say 500 feet is a fair distance. You can get in the door of a 7-Eleven if you're under 21 years old. You can't get even inside a medical dispensary or a recreational dispensary. So for kids playing at the athletic facilities, they have easier access to alcohol than they do cannabis.
Well, I have a sort of a related thought to that because I read in the materials something about advertising not being allowed within a certain area from schools. And I thought it was 1,000 feet. But you could have a business establishment, as long as they don't have any signboards or something? I mean, how does that work?
Right, so we don't regard that as including the business identification sign.
Okay.
And so as long as they're not promoting use through cannabis leaves and stuff on the building or the sign, but it just says, you know, herbal remedies, that's okay.
That's not advertising.
That doesn't count as advertising, in our opinion. But it does prevent on that same sign if it's within 1,000 feet. Or even altogether, we can't put, you know, flashing cannabis leaves and stuff like that. That's not part of it. And that's not, and that's anywhere, not just 1,000 feet.
Right.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner May's comment about the access to people under 21, to the high school students, to any child. There is no access to this building, to those, to those children. I mean, unlike the grocery store in town or the 7-Eleven, where children walk in there all the time and there's alcohol for sale. They're not supposed to buy it, but it's available to them, whereas they couldn't even walk into the dispensary, the cannabis dispensary.
Attorney Mars, did I understand that correctly, that a cannabis dispensary within 1,000 feet of a school couldn't have, like, pot leaves in its logo?
Correct.
Correct? Wow, okay.
That's my understanding at this point. This is all new and how it ultimately is interpreted.
But that would go towards advertising what's for sale versus just the name of a business?
If that's viewed as promoting the use, whereas the name is just identifying, here's this business.
Got it.
And I think the use of the cannabis leaf period seems to be, as I read, it's specifically prohibited in any sort of signage.
Right, regardless of the 1,000.
So Sean, you're at 500 feet, is that correct?
500 feet is where I would say.
I think I'd be okay with 500.
Joel?
I'm struggling.
Okay. Jackie, you're at 0 or 100?
I'm okay, yeah. I'm okay at 500 feet, but it still bothers me that you could have a massive property and your buildings are way at one end. So I don't know how to finesse that or if the board would want to try and finesse that issue.
That I think I'm not struggling with. I think it's the entire property where students could be. And so they can be anywhere, and they're likely to be anywhere, including an athletic field. Where do they congregate at the end of the day? Probably furthest from the building as possible.
But they could walk by on the sidewalk on the way to the bus or the train. I mean, children can walk by there all the time. And we're not saying you can't allow children within 500 feet of.
I think that, I'm just defending the use of the property line as an appropriate point of measure.
This is a discussion for us now?
I have just a quick question. Will there be an additional opportunity for us to speak this evening?
No, public portion is closed.
You will have the opportunity to speak to the Village Board, though, when they consider it.
On September 5th. So EDC, their thinking on no buffer was just to make it as easy as possible for business to come in?
Yes, I think they, a lot of them, just kind of similar to what some of the commissioners here have said, felt it was really more of just a traditional retail business. Yeah, not traditional, but what was in the spirit of a retail business. And so they didn't necessarily see why such a large restriction, whereas, you know, for like a liquor license, it's the 100 feet. There's a big difference between 100 feet and 1,000 feet. And I think for them, it seemed excessive for a distance requirement. And so their preference was that there would be, that that would be eliminated and it would be treated more like a retail, a retail business.
And then hours. Do we want to recommend that we further limit hours of operation?
I would like to see them consistent with our packaged alcohol sales for retail cannabis. I don't see a need to restrict it for medical.
So not open until 11?
Yeah, if that's what alcohol is, then for retail, yeah.
Other thoughts?
For just the recreational?
Yeah, just for recreational. I'd like to just follow the state statute for medical.
That sounds fair and consistent.
Are there hours limited for medical?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's the 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, right?
That's for recreational.
Oh, that's only recreational? Oh, I didn't realize that.
I know there are specific hours in the medical cannabis.
I can't be sure, but I don't believe there are.
Well, still, I would leave that to whatever the state regulations are for medical.
But you want to suggest restricting recreational?
Yes, I would.
To 11 to 10? Other thoughts?
I agree with Jennifer. Just treat it like the packaged good that it is.
Is the 11:00 AM for liquor, is that retail sales or serving?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's retail.
Can we ask the chief?
I think, yeah, he's with me.
Chief, the question was, are the time restrictions 11 to 11 specifically for alcohol sales? Is that just for sales or is that for consumption? Is there a difference?
No, that up to 11:00 PM is currently just packaged liquor.
Now, with the 11:00 AM start time, is that for onsite consumption? Or is that Riverside Foods can't sell packaged?
That I'm not sure. I have to double-check on 11:00 AM. That's what I think it is. I know it's 11:00 PM for package at the other end. But I believe it's 11:00 AM, but not for like a sit-down establishment. Is that correct, Sonia? I think it's.
Trying to get sturdy up here.
I'll be honest, if we restrict it to not until 11:00 AM, nobody's going to come looking at us. They're going to look at other towns.
Well, I think there should be some restriction on the early end. I'm not sure what time it would be. I mean, I was thinking nine-ish, you know, 8:30-ish, something like that. Not as late as 11:00, but I don't know exactly what the right starting time is.
What do you suggest?
Let the businesses figure it out, but that's just my opinion. Like I said, a park does eight until, starts at eight. We have a very good zoning reason to suggest it being parallel with alcohol.
Aren't those all the arguments we've been making, is that it's parallel with alcohol?
Well.
With regard to proximity to schools?
For the restaurants, you know, people aren't necessarily going to a restaurant at 8:00 AM to drink, onsite consumption. Whereas, as was described, people are going to the dispensary to take it home. So I see that as a little bit different.
It's like it might be 9:00 AM.
Amazing.
If the packaged goods are 9:00 AM?
Looks like it might be 9:00 AM for packaged. I'm double-checking.
Class A is packaged, isn't it, Chief Witzel?
In original containers, class A. So class A is our packaged liquor license, and that starts at 9:00 AM? And fees table, give me a second. So class A is 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weekdays and Saturday, and noon to 11:00 PM on Sundays.
So. Yeah, I would, I'm just looking for some consistency. So if that's what we do for packaged liquor, then I think that would be an appropriate limitation here.
9:00 AM to 10:00 PM because the state is 10:00 PM.
So it'd be 9:00 AM start on weekdays and Saturdays, noon on Sundays, if we followed the packaged liquor.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
Other thoughts?
I personally would prefer not to have the Sunday different. I don't personally feel that it's appropriate.
So seven days a week, nine to ten?
Correct.
Other thoughts?
Seems consistent.
Okay. Do we think we're ready for some motions? Further discussion?
I think Jennifer wanted to go through. It said you had some specific questions on the ordinance itself.
Yeah, I guess really I can boil those down to two main things. Probably the easiest being the special provisions for special use termination, which I guess only applies if we're talking about making this a special versus permitted use. But if we were to make it a special use, I would not be in favor of having different termination requirements from the rest of our special use standards. I think that just makes things confusing. And then, as Joel had mentioned earlier, there are a lot of places in the proposed language that duplicates other requirements, that saying that you need to follow state laws, you need to follow other local laws. I'd be in favor of removing those from the use standards, simply because, again, I think it makes things confusing if we have them for one particular use but not others. I mean, it's, it's a given, you need to follow, you have building permits and follow fire codes because that's already required elsewhere.
I had a few comments on specifics too. So I could just quickly go through those.
Sure.
If you'd like. And I'm not sure if they'll end up applying if it's a permitted or a special use, whatever. But I was a little confused in at least two places, how we can make a judgment on the expected future use, the impact of, on the expected future use of nearby businesses. I just don't see how that's possible, how we can really do that. So I would recommend, I would think that should be taken out. And if we don't take it out, there's a reference to, in paragraph 4B, of the immediate vicinity of the property. That seems very vague to me. What's immediate vicinity? Is it 50 feet? Is it the next or neighbor, whatever? I would prefer, no matter what we do, is not having the community beautification provision. I think it's, and it talks about promoting community beautification. I think it's just very, very vague and not really desirable. I would rather focus on things like security and parking and traffic. I wasn't clear on why the reference to co-tenancy, why we care who else is in the other buildings. I also didn't know, in another section, why we wanted to know how many employees were there. The state requires there has to be at least two employees, so I didn't know why that was important.
And that one, I think the idea was to kind of have a better idea of how many we're anticipating to be on-site at one time. So if they're anticipating that the requirement is two, but they're saying, we're always going to have six people there, then that's, that potential of six cars that need to be accommodated on the site.
For parking issues, okay, that makes sense. Okay, if it's parking. And the, and the provision on the odors? I wasn't sure about how, what detectable means and how that's enforceable. Detectable odors, detectable to who? It's sort of like noise regulations in the village. A lot of noises bother me and it's impossible to enforce it. Not a lot of noises, landscaping noises. When we talked about the, the building enhancements, if that stays in, I was wondering if we want to include site or property to include the outdoor exterior area as well as the structure itself. Again, the potential, if we do have security plans or things like that, that there's review or review and approval or a chance for review within a certain number of days, like 30 days, by the police or the fire chief or the building department or something like that. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. I don't know what the state requirements are, just something to think about. And then in paragraph 20 of that four, that provision 420, where it talks about the dispensary is certifying to compliance with a buffer. I don't know why they would be certifying to compliance with a buffer. That would be obvious to everyone. And then the second part of that paragraph was not about how they have to certify to compliance, but if they're an applicant, how can they certify to compliance? I wasn't sure what the thought was there. Unless it was, the thought was there was going to be a future obligation that they would be submitting annual compliance affidavits to, you know, complying with all of our zoning or other ordinance requirements. That would make some sense. So those were my specific comments on the draft.
If I could jump back in, because we did just mention some of these. That entire section K4 about the additional things we want to have information on about, you know, number of employees, parking plan, hours of operations. Those are all things, with the exception of the beautification plan, which I didn't really understand. But everything else, I'd like to see those for every proposed special use in towns. Are those already things that are required as part of our application requirements? Or could they be?
But they are things that we would probably want to see in order to be able to, to do that review. So at a staff level, we're typically asking that they provide additional documentation on how they're going to address the standards that we have for special uses. So talking about parking and traffic and impact on property values and things like that.
So we are getting that information through some way?
So we try to get that information. But it's not specifically A, B, C, traffic plan, you know, traffic study.
Okay.
Other comments on our red text?
Only I support Jennifer's thought that if it's our, if it's in the state law, we shouldn't be repeating it. And if the state law happens to change to become less rigorous, then we would just look at the, those less rigorous items and make an evaluation at that point.
I think that's a good thing to consider is that this doesn't need to be the only time we look at cannabis regulations in Riverside.
Other things you want to discuss before we start doing motions?
What, um, what would be the?
Very sorry. Would you consider allowing some additional time?
I would like to ask, would you consider to allow some additional time to allow us to speak and to consider these issues? This is a very significant change to what will be allowed in Riverside. And frankly, it's very surprising to hear it discussed as completely akin to a packaged liquor store. We're talking about a substance that was a felony to possess in short order from the time of now and which the committee, commission members have mentioned throughout the evening. We don't have experience with this. We don't have experience with this. We don't know how that's going to develop. We haven't gotten information from other nearby municipalities as to what the impact has been. All these unknowns with a very different type of substance. And yet sort of, I think in a erroneous analysis, but a concerning analysis, that it's exactly the same as something that's already permitted. I really ask you to consider, to hear additional input on this before making recommendations. I understand that there will be an opportunity to talk to the board, but what I'm hearing tonight is a lot of sort of unknown and decisions being made on that. And it's surprising to me that something like a daycare is a special use facility in Riverside, but a cannabis dispensary would be potentially recommended as a permitted use. And talking about comparing items to items. I mean, these, these are very different facilities. We're not looking to what other, what other businesses were in a given location, like a daycare in a given location. But let's make it permitted use and allow that to be in the same location. All of this seems to be very rushed based on a lack of information to make the best decisions for the residents of Riverside. I'm very concerned because I'm asking for some additional time.
The public portion of the meeting has been closed and now it's time for the commission to deliberate. Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to say, I'm not sure if this is the right place to say it or afterwards, but I did want to make a statement about why I support regulation by Riverside of a cannabis dispensary. I've done a lot of research. I've looked at studies on the impact on juvenile use of marijuana, before and after, medical and recreational cannabis is allowed in states, impact on crime, property values and all the rest. And I agree that it seems like there perhaps are some inconsistencies in our zoning code. I think that's something that the village, the zoning commission is always trying to improve, those inconsistencies. A lot of those provisions date back a long time and some changes could be made. But specifically, I want to recognize, I've lived in Riverside for 12 years. Okay, I have children. Riverside is a very small community, a very tight community physically. And it's also bordered by other communities. On Ogden, on 26th Street, although that's less of a concern, and on Harlem. We know that state law limits the number of dispensaries that can be located to 1,500-foot buffer. If Riverside chooses to allow dispensaries in and if one locates here, instead of on the non-Riverside side of Harlem, across the bridge, near the Knights Tower, whatever that's called, the other side of Ogden or other nearby locations, and then that dispensary is regulated and is visited by the police departments of those other municipalities, that's my concern. I would rather have that dispensary within Riverside and subject to our regulation rather than have it somewhere else. And that's how I feel. I feel much better about it being on our side of Harlem than on the opposite side of Harlem.
But it's not in your backyard.
Well, it could be.
It's in my backyard.
So that's your concern.
Literally, in my backyard.
Right.
You're talking about putting lights up that are going to shine in my children's windows.
I believe our zoning code restricts that kind of lighting. Lighting has to be shielded.
This is in our backyard, it's not in your backyard. You're not making decisions for your backyard right now. You're making decisions for our backyards.
And your concern, as I understand, I don't think you're supposed to come, but I don't mind you coming. I believe your concern.
So why can't we take this opportunity? If you're going to, if you're going to take your microphone and say that, I think we have an opportunity to speak that.
Okay, I, I think she was just making a statement. She wasn't inviting anyone to engage. And I wanted to add another, another legal.
I do make eye contact, yes. Is that, I think that's a positive thing to do is to make eye contact, yes.
And, and I just wanted to add, you know, legally, once we've closed the public portion of the hearing, you know, people have an expectation. So we had a gentleman here who had an opinion that was different than yours. He knows the public hearing was closed. He's left. He doesn't have an opportunity then to speak. So we can't let some people speak and not give other peoples an opportunity to speak because he left on knowing that the public portion was closed.
Thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion restricting the hours of operation of a potential dispensary? A recommendation to restrict the hours?
I will move that we restrict the hours. Okay. Specifically 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week? Yes. Second?
Megan, will you call the roll please?
Oh. Are we going to take each section and an individual?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I think there will be different votes on the different components.
Okay. So for hours?
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
And that was 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Seven days a week. Thank you.
Does anybody want to make a recommendation concerning it being permitted versus special use?
Recommendation?
And what would that recommendation be?
Make it a permitted use?
In which district? B1C?
B1C, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
What would be the process because we have before us an ordinance that was specifically written for special use? So now it's a permitted use. Would we have another hearing to review revised text? Because there does seem to be a little concern about, you know, how we can ensure that the concerns that are covered in the special use then would be also covered in the, in the permitted use.
I think we would get to that as part of these recommendations would be. Then the use standards would be.
We would.
Couldn't we make it part of this?
Recommendation.
Recommendation, this, this portion of the vote, that it would have to be rewritten sufficient to maintain some of the restrictions?
Well, isn't the vote board hoping to vote on something on September 5th? So if we voted in the majority to recommend permitted, would we then go through this and make recommendations on what to strike?
I think you would make recommendations on what use standards you think are appropriate for permitted, that you would want included in there. And I think we had a fair number of them included in there. And you could say, you know, I want K, L, and T to be in there, but I don't care about the others.
It can be as specific or unspecific as, as, you know, we're able to make it. So when permitted versus special is really only, at this point, changing the use table. But then because some of the wording throughout this is, is specific to special uses, you could either charge me with rewriting it to maintain as much of that as possible with the understanding that it's a permitted use. Or we can go through it and have more detailed discussion about what, what stays, what goes, how it might be worded.
But you're confident that we can be, as, as, I mean, as a permitted use, we can put different restrictions on this specific permitted use than we make for other?
Absolutely.
Completely.
I agree with that.
Okay.
So does anybody want to make a friendly amendment that if we were to make a majority recommendation for permitted, that we go through it together tonight?
I would actually like to move that if we come to a majority decision that it's a permitted use, that it should be rewritten and we take another look at it.
So, I mean, that's within your purview.
That is a motion. So.
You're certainly welcome to make that motion. I know the board is looking to, to, to get this back as soon as they can, but, you know, your decision is your decision.
I think my concern with that, with that be is we've, we've put out a timeline out, you know, in e-flashes in the website, saying that these are the discussion dates. And if the board doesn't have a motion before them, when they're going to be discussing this on the September 5th agenda, then that leaves that discussion a little bit up in the air. So I think.
I'm fine, I mean, I have comments, I'm fine. I already shared most of them. I'm fine going through them provision by provision. I don't think it'll take too long.
I think we've covered most everything already.
Yeah, I'm okay going through them. I think, I agree, I don't know that, none of that will take all that long because we have talked about most of them.
Okay.
Do we have another motion then? Sorry.
Well, you made a motion.
And nobody's seconding, I guess, is my point.
Right.
Okay, I will propose an amendment to Commissioner May's motion that we review the paragraph four. The provisions of paragraph four through 20 under K tonight and make recommendations or discuss which of those provisions we would like to see in the permitted use standard for cannabis dispensaries.
If that's the majority.
If that's the majority.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Well, he has to, she's proposing-
Somebody needs to second that. Oh.
Do you want to accept that amendment, or?
Accepted.
Joel? Joel, you were the second on answering.
I will maintain my second with it being amended.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Haddigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Yes.
Okay.
So, permitted use. So, that would get rid of number three, wouldn't it, which is the special use termination?
Yep.
Or would require special use, yeah.
I no longer have an issue with that section?
So, number four says, "Adult use or medical cannabis dispensing organization facility components in determining compliance with the standards set forth in references, special uses, findings. The following components of the facility shall be evaluated based on the entirety of the circumstances affecting the particular property in the context of the existing and intended future use of the property." So-
I thought the motion that we were gonna go through these after the vote, is that what?
We just did vote.
Yeah, I believe we're going through them now.
We just did the vote, so.
Well, we have one more motion to discuss.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Well, anybody want to make a motion about a buffer?
Can we consider the buffer as part of the use regulations?
Yes, you are welcome to have a buffer as part of your use regulations. Are you saying we do it as we go through 4K?
Um, yeah, as we, as we go through those, because we are, we will be talking about the section for minimum distance requirements.
That's right.
Section five?
Okay, so that's how you want to proceed?
So, for paragraph four, the overarching paragraph, that's the last line, mentions intended future use of the property. So, I don't, I don't see if that's meaningful practically or if it's legally meaningful to include that. But I don't also know how that would, if that would even be included in a permitted use. So, maybe that would go away anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how this section four applies in its entirety.
Right. This would be the most difficult section to maintain under a permitted use. You know, the security plan, we can require it to be submitted and reviewed for comment and approval by the chief. We can, we can work with that kind of thing. But the, you know, as I had stated earlier, the beautification plan, the, and some of the other things are not, they're more, they're more subjective.
Yeah, I think in the following paragraphs, nearly everything else, we already have ways to be prescriptive, except for the security plan. So, that might just need to be, one other thing is saying that we need to, that they need to submit these security plans for review and approval, as you said.
Does everybody else?
I mean, we can require a lot of this, you know, as part of the application process, like you were talking about earlier. We can have them tell us, you know, what kind of building it is, are there co-tenants, what are your proposed hours of operation, what's your, what's your parking plan. But then we're just measuring those against our, whatever standards we have in place. So, this is more like, what are you turning in?
Yeah, and if we're talking about it as a permitted use, is there even a mechanism for them to give us this information for review?
I would say as part of their occupancy.
Yeah, as, as, as part of their occupancy. So-
Okay, that makes sense.
So, an example that, you know, I was thinking about is, we have very extensive solar, solar power regulations, right? And only in cases where it's visible from the street is it a special use, yet you still have to come to the building and zoning and demonstrate that you comply with all these various things. And that's all in the zoning code as well.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, this is a little bit different, obviously, but it's, it's the same idea, that here we've developed a set of use regulations, and in order for us to determine whether we meet them, we need to see these things.
Okay, that makes sense.
We don't need any particular zoning approvals or relief, other than us checking these boxes, but we get to see them.
Right. In that case, can we leave everything as is, but possibly consider striking the community beautification plan?
Yes. And the anticipated impact, I think.
Yes, and-
So, B and D?
Do you want to be out as well?
Yep. And then K, because it's, again, it's kind of redundant of state law, right?
Yes.
And then? Well, but K says village code-
Sure.
But the village code already says you need to comply with village codes. I don't-
That's fair. I mean, I kind of go with my assumption that you have to follow the law. It's just because it's not explicitly mentioned here, all the zoning rules that apply to lighting and parking and upkeep, those are still applying.
Right, exactly.
And then L would go out as well, because it's not a special use.
5A? Or do you want to circle back to it?
No, we can, I think we should just discuss it. It seems like the consensus is a 500-foot buffer from the edge of school property. So, anyone disagree with that, just being the consensus?
Sounds fair.
I think that's what we came to.
I know Teresa, you disagree, correct?
Oh, right, Teresa, you, like, 1,000 feet from the school.
No, your, your assessment is correct. I think there is a majority, not consensus, there is a majority that favors the 500 feet.
Right.
Which is why-
Does that include you? I think that's why I'm thinking after you.
I never answered that question.
I prefer the state law that doesn't prescribe anything. I'm in the minority. So, the majority seems to be 500. Go with that.
Another way to approach it could just be to say it's a permitted use in the B-1C district. And not mention buffers at all. So, that's something that could be considered. I mean, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but just for consideration.
I guess, and applicability. I don't necessarily see D-96 building another school.
No, I don't think so.
Not to say other surrounding school districts might not, but if we go with the 500 with the existing schools in the area, that affects one property, I think, with the 500-foot. Two properties.
It's true, but I think one of the properties is already residential.
Right. So, it affects the townhouses that are there on the north side of Berkeley and the 711 at the corner of 26th Street. So, the 500-foot basically comes to that north end of Berkeley.
Would the buffer apply to the new District 96 administration building, or no, because there's no-
Not a school.
Okay.
Thoughts on what Jackie put on the table?
And that was with no buffer, just permitted.
I mean, I'm, I'm on record as saying, I say treat it consistently with alcohol, but, so that would be the 100-foot?
From a church?
Exactly.
Not a school?
Yeah, from a church. I'm okay with-
I'm pretty sure the state is from schools as well.
Yep.
Yeah, the schools are church, right.
Schools are churches.
Schools are church. I would not be in favor of having a buffer with regard to churches, personally.
Okay.
But we can go forward with a vote of 500-foot buffer.
It would just be from schools.
And I just, was just mentioning that as something for the board to consider as an option.
Okay, so we'll leave 500?
It sounds like everyone is more comfortable with 500-foot buffer.
Yeah, I'm really not sold on the 500, but I guess I could live with it as sort of an in-between.
You would like to keep a buffer for it? Or not?
I will say this. I'm not sure how the div of 500-foot buffer is, all your, the only one you're eliminating, the only property you're eliminating is the 711. That's my only comment.
Which is the corner, which is the corner across from the school. So, I am in favor of a buffer. I cannot decide where it should fall.
Well, it seems like the majority is 500 and not 1,000. So, we agree to recommend that then? Or do you want to keep deliberating?
You're okay with 500?
I'm okay with 500.
I'm okay with 500.
Okay. I think we just vote on it or whatever and move on.
The board can change that if they feel strongly one way or the other, right?
So, and the medical cannabis, we can't change.
And there's additional opportunity for public comment down as well.
True.
And I think our discussion gives them plenty of-
Yes.
Information. On our thoughts.
Okay.
So, B stays as is because that's-
State statute.
State statute. And unlike some of the other things, I think it's important to keep in here for clarity.
And which is why it's prohibited in B-2 municipalities.
Yeah, there's nowhere, there's nowhere in the B-2 it would be able to go. There's too many schools close and in downtown.
Can you say that?
Would we consider striking B, since it is part of the state statute? It's repetitive. And if the state statute does change, do we, do we want that to be in our ordinance?
That's a good point.
Sure.
That's a good point. Oh, then we have to go through, you know, next.
Well, because we have a distance requirement for adult use, can I, can we at least just have the heading and refer them to the section of the state statute?
I think that's a good solution.
So, that way-
I like that, too.
Okay.
I like it.
So, is paragraph six one of those that can be eliminated because it's state law?
Yep. On, on seven, I think everything after the, including the word provided, would come out. But you guys talked earlier about creating a separate parking requirement for this use that's different than the other commercial uses in B-1, which you're welcome to do. Well, but, so then it's okay, because it just says you have to provide the parking units per the required off-street, or the required parking of that use, right? Right, except that we don't have any use, parking requirements for this use, other than commercial uses in the B-1 currently. So, if you want to create one, now's the time.
Create a parking standard.
We'd have to, we absolutely have to.
No, you can leave it just-
No, I, I think we do have to create it.
Okay.
Because when we look at the strip of Harlem that we're talking about, it, like I said before, this is, this is not necessarily people smoking out in the front yard, but it's going to have high levels of traffic. And so, wherever such an establishment would go, has to have parking that would support that, that volume of patrons.
Right. So, it's not going onto residential streets? So, is that something we'd need to do right now, or is that something that, Tony Mars, you try and draft and you present it to the board?
Well, I think on this specific issue, I would need some guidance from you as to what you think's appropriate. Or we could, you could just throw it to the board, I guess, and say, you know, we think it should be higher than a regular commercial use, but we'll leave it to you to decide.
I don't have any particular expertise in this, so I don't know how I would decide. There should be sufficient parking for employees and the expected-
Patrons.
Patrons with room for circulation of cars and ingress, egress in a safe manner.
Yeah, if the building's less than 3,000 square feet, it can't be nothing.
Right. Does everyone agree with that, that we don't want to waive parking altogether, obviously? No, you cannot, cannot waive. I'm gonna come fairly firmly hard on this.
Sure.
You cannot waive parking requirements on this use. So, we definitely want a separate parking requirement that starts at zero square feet? Yes.
Sorry, I didn't want you to go with zero.
Is that something you can help with zoning?
And then there would be a requirement per employee and per square footage, I guess, right?
Yeah, I don't know how it's done. That makes sense to, to require one- That makes sense to require one per employee per shift, you know, however many employees you have in a given shift or the max of them.
Right.
Anticipated plus something.
Right, and that's a common thing in parking standards.
So I would think this, the first sentence should sort of end, plan must be provided that at a minimum provides for X number of parking spaces. I don't know what that number is.
And really, I don't know that we need this Section 7 at all because we're just adding the parking requirement as part of the parking standards.
It would be...
So it doesn't need to be in the use requirements.
But we need to...
But we need to come up with that number if it's one per 400 square feet or whatever would be most appropriate.
So I can look at what some of the different communities in Colorado or California have in their parking requirements, and I can also reach out to our traffic engineer and see, I don't know if they've added that as a use into the traffic standards.
Yet.
That they can do like the traffic generation, just kind of see what they have in that, in that standards book, and see if they have any guidance for us to utilize.
Sounds good.
So, but definitely zero is not an option. They have to provide some parking, and Michael and I and the village engineer will look and see what we can come up with for a number to give to the village board.
And Jennifer, you're saying that if we put it in the parking regulations section, we put the standard, that we don't need to reference it here because it will just apply?
Correct. We would just need to reference that section.
Well, we don't even need to do that.
We don't even... Because we do say earlier that we're asking for a parking plan.
Yes.
So we don't need to be repetitive in that way as well.
Okay.
Unless anyone has thoughts differently, eight, nine, 10, 11, or I'll find a key.
To keep?
Yeah. Whether it's permitted or special.
I had a question on number eight. On-site consumption or use is not allowed. Is the facility by state law required to place signs so that people know that they're not supposed to be consuming it onsite or in the parking lot?
I don't think so because I know villages can allow onsite consumption if they want to.
So do we want to add that as part of the permitted use? That they make their patrons aware of the fact that they're not allowed to consume?
It's a good idea to post signage.
Would it be illegal regardless in the parking lot?
Yes.
Right, according to state law?
Correct.
But my concern is that people know that, so that they're not doing it inadvertently and causing a big headache for people who live in the area or the police department or whoever, if they're told, you know, the sign, you can't do this, or if the dispensary hands them a chip or something, somehow people know.
Well, my concern about it being outside is that we now have signage that's...
Advertising?
Not advertising, but definitely alerting people to what is happening inside.
I mean, I don't know. Then it could be in the inside.
Yeah.
If they leave, they can be told you can't consume in parking lot outside.
Or it has to be sidewalked or whatever.
Prominently on the door or prominently at the exit. That was my concern, is having outdoor signage.
Did I hear earlier that it was the state law prohibits alcohol?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we don't need...
And drive-throughs.
Nine? No drive-through?
Right, so...
So nine could...
Yeah, if you want nine out, that's fine, too. Does everyone agree?
Yeah.
So 12 gets at Chief Weitzel's Alice.
I think it has to say will require the property owner, not may.
Yeah, the property owner shall enter into this agreement.
Shall works as well.
It needs to be written like the other permitted uses, which say shall.
Right, this one's a little tougher, I think, in terms of a permitted use to require. Well...
I don't know why they wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to want to. But let's, I understand what you're saying, so I'll word it as shall and will.
I think it adds to our village ability to have unannounced visits and appropriately police the area.
Are you concerned about the, the enter into an agreement, the shall enter into an agreement?
Well, but it's pursuant to something that's in state law, so I'm not sure that we're really putting all that big of a restriction on someone when we say you have to...
Well, the state's restriction there is the statutory authority for us to be able to do that. The only way we can do it...
This is part of the Cannabis Act. This is something that shopping centers will enter into.
But we're making that a condition of your use of this property is you have to do this.
No, I understand. We'll carry it over.
And I mean, this, this allows us to address some of the issues that the community brought up with regard to traffic.
Absolutely.
And I wonder if a provision like this, if you, do you think you need to have some kind of a time limit on this? The shall enter into an agreement, it's a permitted use, they go in, they start their business, they still haven't entered into an agreement, or is it clear that they have to have that agreement before they can open their doors?
Yeah, I think they would need that before we'd issue a certificate of occupancy.
If it's in the use standards, you would need to have that in place.
Certificate of occupancy or whatever.
If you haven't done what the ordinance says, then you're not in compliance with our zoning code, and so the state shouldn't be issuing you a license to operate.
Yes.
13 is just a reference to the sign code, we can take that out.
We already voted on hours of operation. So that was nine to... Nine to 10?
Yep. Cooperation with the village is okay?
Oh, and, sorry, the nine to 10, that was just for adult use? No?
For recreational.
For, yeah, for the adult use.
Yeah, with no restrictions for medical?
In paragraph 15, it references during normal hours of operation. Shall provide access to the place fire and code enforcement during normal hours of operation. Does that mean not business hours? Could it be interpreted to include before and after business? Or does that need to be clarified?
I think reasonable hours.
Hours of operation is the open and close, but...
So do we want it to have more like reasonable hours? So code and building enforcement can go in at 8:00 AM or, I don't know what's typical? And I know we have nine to 10, that's fairly broad, but what if the police want to come in earlier and the business owner is there? I don't know.
In times when employees are present, better.
Okay, perhaps. So the no odor thing, that's common in the other states?
I'd like to see that remain regardless, I think.
Yeah, that may be more applicable to something like a cultivation center where there's a huge mass of it, but I don't think it hurts to have it in here if you guys are open to it.
I think prevents it from being a nuisance.
And Jen, I understand your concern about vagueness, but that's just the nature of both noise and odor regulations, unless we...
So the place of enforcement. No, at least noise you have decibel levels that can be measured. I don't know if there is something for odors.
It depends. Some of them are, like a car stereo under traffic laws is, can you hear it 75 feet away? Right, so it's like, but...
It's easier to...
We win the traffic citations on based on, it depends on the judge and the testimony, but you can't.
They say for noise frequency, it can be more important than decibel level, and that's usually not in, right, noise regulations. It's frequency.
17?
I think 17 would need to come out.
And 18?
That's in the state regulation, right?
I believe it is, yes. So we'll take it up.
Yeah. Going back to 17, though, so these building enhancements are going to things like lighting and security cameras and so forth. But we're striking that? Is that in the state ordinance? Is that covered somewhere else to require security cameras on the building?
Yes. The security cameras and the security system are required by the state statute. They do require lighting. I don't remember, I know they have to submit a lighting and security plan to the state, so they, there must be, or they're in the process of creating, they haven't, you know, quite massaged out all the details just yet for the licensing, but...
And I think we're going to require those to be turned in.
Right. As we have that in the...
As well for review.
So do we want to, do we want to leave 17 in and require that those plans also come to us?
I think the...
I think we have it somewhere.
I think we already have it previously.
I think that's already covered earlier if it's not...
We talked about that they have to substantiate that they comply with the state law.
Right. The part I'm really concerned about is making them install certain building enhancements that, you know, are kind of a subjective decision of somebody that may not apply to everybody. It's appropriate in a special use process, but not in permanent, because we can't set forth, set it forth objectively. But we can certainly make sure, we can ask them to, you know, provide us this information so we can, so that we can determine that the, you know, the safety of employees and customers is being guaranteed.
You have security and safety of employees and customers in 4C that will be reviewed by the chief.
Yeah.
Add lighting just as part of security. Does that work?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Are we on 19?
So we're at 19?
And we're striking?
Yep.
And same with 20?
Yeah, one thing we could do here is just put that they have to provide us with their state license prior to operation, which is kind of the same thing. So getting, prior to getting their certificate of occupancy.
Now, is there a way to, maybe this is provided, to have either the establishment or the state share with the village all inspection reports, et cetera, et cetera? So we see those? Is that already in state law? Let's say the state goes out and inspects it, do we get a copy of that report? Or could we...
I don't think we would get it as a matter of course. We could probably use the Freedom of Information Act or request that...
To the state?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. Could we require the facility to share it with us? Or any other similar types of state regulatory? So we know what's going on in the facility? What if there's some...
Something like a health code review or something?
Yeah, I think rather than forcing us to FOIA it, we should be receiving it.
If the state's not going to share with us that there's some issue with the facility, either business-wise or something else...
The reason we wouldn't share it is because we're entitled to it and FOIA, and then they're not going to give it to us anyways.
I mean, it's on...
Do you know specifically what report you would want? I mean, I don't know what reports are being made on an annual basis.
From something I read, I think that the state, well, I'm sure, just like video gaming or anything else, the state has the right, or the packaged liquor stores, they have the right to go and inspect the facility. Can we see that type of inspection? And to ensure that they have the security cameras, that they're pointed in the right direction, that, you know, the packaging is appropriate of everything. I mean, whatever the state regulates. Like packaged liquor stores are licensed under the village, and so we, right, the village can do stings to make sure they're taking, checking age and whatnot, but if the state is the licensing entity, then is it their responsibility to do those things? Are they doing those things? And if they are, can we get purple lights?
Well, the village makes those regulations.
It's fun to know what the state knows because it's in our neighborhood.
Yeah. So make an obligation of the...
The owner.
The business owner to inform us of state violations, ongoing conformance with state licensing requirements and results of inspections?
Something like that. I mean, we could either ask them to create a report for us or an affidavit, or simply provide us with what the state has already sent them when it comes to inspection. I'm not sure what the right document would be.
If the state knows it, we should know it.
Other thoughts? All righty. We don't have old business, we don't have new business?
Oh, I think we need to get a motion and voting on all those amendments. We just went through them, we didn't get a motion and...
Right.
Second and vote.
So further discussion on what we just discussed? So a motion to recommend those changes?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner May?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Marhul?
Aye.
Chairperson Matteo?
Yes.
Can I, I'm not sure that we voted on actual permitted use or special use.
We did.
We did.
I have...
It was the second vote after ours.
With the understanding that we go through the 4K standards.
And it was 7-0, 6-0.
So based on the review of the 4K standards, everyone's still comfortable?
With the permitted use? In the B1C?
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. It was a lot of work, a long evening, a lot to consider, but you did a great job. Thank you so much. So we got through.
Now the village is...